Everyone, the time is 5:32 PM. It is Tuesday, July the 1st. I'm gonna call the special city council meeting to order with the city secretary. Please call the roll.
Mitchell.
Here.
Hi, sir. Rizzo.
Rizzo.
Zuniga. Harris.
Here.
McKinney. Tobias.
I'm here.
Can you call Heiser one more? All right. Mark, note, let the record note, Heiser is present. Sorry. All right, we have five members present. Next up is citizen comments period. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward? Seeing none, I'm gonna close citizen comments. Now, next up is executive session. The city council will now go into executive session, discuss agenda items one, A through I, pursuant to Texas government code, sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.087. Thank you. For the record, agenda items are one, A through L. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna, the time is 7:09. I'm gonna call this meeting back to order. There was no action taken during executive session. With no further business to discuss, motion to adjourn. The time is still 7:09, and today is July 1st, and I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city secretary please call roll?
Mitchell. Heiser.
Here.
Rizzo.
Present.
Zuniga.
Present.
Harris.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Tobias.
I'm here.
Next up is approval of the minutes.
Mayor Proton, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes. Consider approval for a city council meeting on June 17th for the special and the regular meeting of that day.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes made by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six, zero. Next up is citizen comment period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward to speak, and please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We ask that you fill out citizen comments forms to submit to either myself or the city secretary. With the first speaker being... I think this says Valerie Dale. Okay. Thank you.
This is my uncle's information. Lordy Jesus. Okay, I was here last two weeks ago, and I stated that we had found out that the survey was incorrect, and that information was provided by Graham Parker from Pape and Dawson. They sent it to the city officials, they sent it to the acquisition people, and we never heard back in 72 hours. Yet, they proceeded to, rather than dismiss the commission report hearing, dismiss the motion to condemn, they proceeded on. So, on June 25th, this was given to my uncle after Mr. Kennedy called me in my car. He said, "Don't call me." Called his attorney of record, even though he said he's not handling his case anymore. This was given to my uncle that cannot see, and stressed out with an offer. They've taken off the table, put on the table, the first one legally put in writing that he can really review without the proposal. Hope this finds you well. I'm reaching out directly to you to let you know that earlier this week, the city surveyors supplied this city with a new revised survey of the proposal easement in front of your property on city needs, and now which includes additional 25 feet. They knew this back to October 22nd, 2024, in Ms. Smith's office. Your granddaughter Valerie was saying this should be included. According to the surveys, they were able to analyze the situation based on the information provided by Valerie and certain for the frontage of your property, 100 feet. I have included a new survey for this document. As you know, the special commissioners hearing is above as set for July 10th, 2025. The city has no wish to continue and engage in continued litigation for you, but particularly if it's not necessary. I understood from your comments before and city council last week that you have no real obligation objection to the project and the acquisition, but you want the issues surrounding your title and survey to be addressed. Given the city's now has dropped all the other parties, which we didn't find out until June 25th, the amended condemnation, including the heirs, was dropped May 12th, 2025. No record of that for us, but it is there. So, because I made a claim about his property, they decided to investigate it, and they made an offer to my uncle for $20,000 and check if he were to sign this. And with this agreement, it would remove all the different charges, allegations, it would go away, and there would be no reappraisal, no new survey, and all parties going through this time cost and stress of the hearing. What they failed to mention was, this is not a legal document. What they did was, before he contacted me, he called me on the phone. He spoke to Howard's lawyer that signed off. We didn't have the opportunity to go make a motion, but if God was good, we got to put it in there, because otherwise it would have no representation. What they provided to my uncle was a document that was a new survey. If you need a third-party survey person, then why are you using someone else's information from Pape and Dawson? That was provided to him, and it was dated June 12th, 2024, which is 25. This is the document that was provided with the new easement, this is original. When you have a survey, you have to have a stamp on it and a seal, okay? And the one they gave my uncle didn't have a stamp or seal, which he would not be able to see that. The documentation and using the books and from the records was not mentioned. They also changed the stamp on that. So, based on that, I'm gonna continue myself.
Ms. Dale, would you mind pausing just so we can reset the clock?
I am, I am.
All right, thank you.
Based on this fake document, frauded information, and having, you ready?
Ms. Dale, also, is your mic on, just?
I'm sorry. I'm loud, I'm loud, it's my outside voice. I know you can hear me. I'm ready. It's on.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And Kent, Secretary Melissa went to my uncle's house, to his house directly. He's represented by an attorney of record. That is illegal. She cannot mention any fees, she cannot mention anything about the cost of that. She told him his property's not worth that amount of money, and that if he signs, she'll come back later and notarize it. He said, "I'm not gonna sign anything without my niece being there." I stopped by the same day after I'd filed the motion, and I read this. I thought, "Who would even do this?" What he also did was, when he sent this out to my, after he sent it out to my uncle, he emailed it to two of the board members. He emailed it to, I think, maybe the lawyer. And there's a record now, a paper trail of this illegal document he sent to people, making you a witness, also a co-contributor to this fraud and deception that you guys continue to perpetrate. That is so wrong that you continue to, if someone retaliates, if someone raises a question, a negotiation. I read the condemnation, you said Howard refused to participate. Howard has never gotten a legal document presented to him in hard farm copy, and the first one he gets is illegal and a fraud. I spoke to Mr. Pape. He sent me an email on June 6th saying, "I've contacted everybody. I went to his office today. He will provide a letter saying this is not a document that he signed. He did not authorize this." You can't go get a city official to survey when it's required by the guidelines you set up. Bill of rights, you deny all these rights to these people. And Ms. Deborah Anthony's been treated the same way. You retaliate. What we're saying today, based on all these different things, penal code 3221, property tax code, Texas civil practice remedies, Texas disciplinary rules, professional conduct, Texas occupation, civil rights, all these are things you guys have done. And what we're asking right now, because you know without a doubt a fact that this is illegal, that you immediately counsel the hearing that's coming up, you immediately counsel the condemnation, because you have to go back and start over our legal negotiations. Howard has never objected to any of these things that you're doing, but yet you take someone that's blind, they can't see, and he was willing to sign this. He said, "I will sign this, I want this to go away. I don't wanna join my sisters and die over this stuff and have a heart attack. I don't want my uncle to die over a heart attack, being treated like this." This is despicable, you would come and do this to anybody. He can't even see what you want him to sign, and nobody better not go back to his house again. I will seek charges against you, I will get restriction orders from you. No one approaches him again with any documents that's a bunch of crap that you're trying to present to him that's illegal. I want his, the session is on July 7th. We have a hearing to bring all this together in front of a judge. You have a special session, hearing meeting. I want to dismiss immediately. If you can act with integrity and bring legal facts correctly in any legal negotiations, we're not speaking to you again. And we will seek any measures possible through civil liberties, any fees, any actions against the city. Because now all of you are culpable for this, because now he sent an email to you saying what had happened. And if you don't have a copy of it, ask your people, ask Kent to send you one, what he sent out. And I will have a copy of the information from Mr. Pape, as well as Mr. Graham. So, I'm gonna present this to the secretary there, that she can have a copy of the illegal bogus D contract, the real one, that Mr. Pope's company did, and a copy of this offer, invalid offer, that was presented by your legal attorney. And I didn't read all the verbiage on that, because it's too embarrassing that he dumbed it down so much to address my uncle like he was stupid.
Ms. Dale, your time is up.
My time, I'm gonna need to get it to give to her. So, this is all your stuff you presented. So, I want this on record. If you don't have it on record, we're gonna post it in the community citizen program that Mr. Bond has been part of. If you don't see it on the website, and obviously they put it up, I try to email these people, and the website emails them, and they work.
All right, thank you. Up next is Ms. Kate Johnson.
Good evening, mayors, Mayor Proton, city council members, and fellow residents of Kyle. My name is Kate Johnson, and I'm the president of Preservation Associates, a countywide historic preservation nonprofit. We own the Katherine M. Porter Childhood Home at 508 Center Street, a place of deep historical and literary significance. Preservation Associates opposes any actions that could impact the site of the Katherine M. Porter Home. We do not want our front yard to be demolished for a vibe trail that has no place in downtown Kyle. Our trees and yard have been part of the home for many years, contributing to its serenity and historical value. Adhering this, altering, I'm sorry, altering this land would negatively impact the tranquility and historical integrity of the property. Katherine M. Porter, Pulitzer winning author, lived in this house from 1892 to 1902, and it is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. In addition to preserving the home, Preservation Associates, in partnership with Texas State University, runs a writer's residency for recent Texas State MFA graduates, hosting readings and events that engage the community and celebrate the legacy of Katherine M. Porter. The proposed widening of Center Street, also known as FM 150, triggers a 4F review because of the home status on the National Register. The 4F review ensures that transportation projects do not harm historic sites. If impacts are unavoidable, the project must explore alternatives or mitigation efforts to reduce harm to these important resources. While the project is funded through bond money, FM 150 is a state road, which means the 4F review process is required. This mandates a thorough evaluation of any potential impacts on the home, and we must ensure that reasonable efforts are made to minimize any negative efforts, effects. Preservation Associates is committed to working with the city of Kyle, Techstat, and other stakeholders to find a solution that balances the road widening with the preservation of this important historic site. The Katherine M. Porter Home plays a key role in the cultural heritage of our community, and we must ensure its preservation for future generations. Thank you for your time and attention. I look forward to working together to find a solution that protects both our community's growth and its shared history.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Up next is Yvonne Flores-Kale.
All right, good evening. I am here tonight to talk about a couple of agenda items. The first one being agenda items four and six, which I'm really glad to see. It's under reports and presentation. You have for items four, receive a report, hold a discussion, and provide staff direction. Same with number six. It's receive a report, hold a discussion, and provide staff direction. I'm not sure if you guys are aware of the Hayes County bond that just failed. But part of the reason it failed is because it was, the agenda item was placed under the wrong section. So, my advice to you guys and to your one employee that you direct is if you are gonna take direction and give it to staff, that you stick that under consider and possible action, and not under reports and presentation. All right. The next item I wanted to talk to you about was agenda item number eight. And I hope you guys are all listening, because this is downright ridiculous. You have an agenda item to consider an approval of resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to purchase 0.0384. For those of you that are not familiar with numbers, that is a third of a tenth of an acre of land. They want to purchase it, meaning staff would like to purchase it for $92,526. If that was an acre, you would be purchasing an acre for $2.5 million. I'm not too sure why this is such an important piece of property, but I would think that $94,000 for less than a third of a tenth of an acre would be a bit excessive. I'm also concerned with the verbiage of allowing the city manager to authorize to execute all documents, as well as include reasonable closing cost. As residents who are paying for this property, this right-of-way, not even something that you guys own, the least we can do is have it come back to council so you can tell us how much exactly we're gonna pay for this property. That is actually under a couple of these agenda items, and I think giving authority to one person like that is a scary situation. I think as residents, we are owed the amount that the city is paying for this property, and not a, please, can we, can we please have it wait? But more of a, why is this even being done in this process? Additionally, I hope that each of you guys are listening to the residents that are coming up here to speak. I'm not sure, I'm not sure why you wouldn't, but I hope moving forward that you guys can be a little bit more respectful of the residents and their property.
Thank you. Up next is, I think Stephanie McDonald.
Good evening, members of council. Many have heard the news about the 2024 Hayes County Road Bond. A district court judge ruled that the road bond's void even though approved by voters. The reason is because the Texas Open Meetings Act was violated when calling for the election. Hayes County Judge Ruben Becerra, at this point, is not inclined to appeal and spend another $100,000 to be at the same point they are now. He knows that a proper ruling means the outcome of the appeal will be the same. Councilmember Robert Rizzo responded publicly as follows. "This ruling probably costs lives. The much-needed road improvements for the underserved and forgotten eastern part of our county will continue to suffer because of this ruling. Posting this on the Kyle Outreach page is disturbing. The much-needed road improvements would have benefited residents in Kyle's ETJ. Kyle's one of the largest communities in Hayes County, and usually flips a bill for bonds that benefit your community on the western side of the county, like a huge park bond that was passed a few years ago that benefited mainly the western side of the county. Kyle is the largest full-time community, so that means we take on the largest part of the county bond debt. Voters overwhelmingly voted this road bond, and with one ruling, their voting votes disappeared. It wasn't that the vote disappeared because of a ruling, it was because it was done illegally. Unfortunately, Councilmember Rizzo is not holding our elected officials accountable for holding an illegal election and the lack of transparency and public input on this bond. Some of the projects on this bond were controversial, so public input was not desired. Judge Becerra's immediate concern now is to find the resources necessary to address the most dire segments of our infrastructure, their infrastructure, and bring relief to so many of our residents who had faith in our ability to fund these vital road projects. Councilmember Rizzo's focus is misplaced. If concerned about the east side of Kyle, the council must stop wasting millions of dollars on pet projects. We need a temporary building moratorium and focus placed on immediate needs. The east side has no dedicated grocery store, yet there's talk of an additional large grocer coming to the west side of Kyle. Put it on the east side, they need it. There was talk of a library on the east side, there was a suggestion of a police substation on the east side. The council did approve trees for a park on the east side, but didn't have them watered, then they died. None of these other items have materialized. I'm imploring you to do what makes sense. Speaking of that, 37 roundabouts in Kyle is not what Kyle needs. Stop comparing us to Carmel, Indiana with roundabouts. You're comparing apples to oranges. When I spoke with the representative of the engineering company, he stated a traffic study had been done comparing a roundabout to a traffic signal design for old stagecoach at Center Street. He said there really wasn't a difference. Yet, we'll spend millions and millions more to place these all over the city with no public input. The cost will not only be incredible, but it'll be ongoing, because all of them will have to be maintained with landscaping irrigation, using our precious water resources, lighting in our installations. I don't believe most residents realize the road bond entails acquiring private land from over 300 landlords, and if negotiations fail, the city will be demanding to take the land and all territory from the landlords. Mr. Howard Green and his family are painful sufferers of this process. Women have once with the city trying to condemn their land, which apparently states that we're subject to cold district. Please, our citizens, please, help the town.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Up next, we have Paul Hill.
Good evening, city council. Thank you for having me today. My name is Paul Hill, and I am a resident of Kyle. I live on the east side of Kyle in the Post Oak neighborhood. I'm here to talk about item 18, the resolution, I'm sorry, item 19, the resolution about the road bond. But first, I want to say a sincere thank you to city council and city staff who made this past weekend's Pride Market Days possible. I was there, second year in a row, and it was a lot of fun. And I was really happy that our city stood up for us and had an event despite negative political pressure nationwide against the LGBT community. The judge's ruling that threw out over 65,000 votes in favor of the road bond that we passed last year is frankly a tragedy. I'm not going to litigate that here. I'm not the county's attorney, and I don't represent the four plaintiffs, four people who had that bond thrown out. What I am here to do is speak in favor of this resolution, because while I disagree with the ruling that the judge made, I think it was legally incorrect, and I hope that the county appeals. We have to move forward. We have to find a way to fix these roads. I grew up in San Marcos. My mom lives on the east side of San Marcos, and I live in the east side of Kyle. I know how bad it is. I ran unsuccessfully for office, but in that time, I blockwalked all over the Kyle area, including a lot of the east side. There were parts that were barely passable. And now, it is a tragedy that these roads are going to be delayed even further. Voters weighed all of the concerns. It was an extremely public conversation about the bond and what it would entail, and voters voted for this bond by over 10 points. And yet, and also, sorry, I would like to add, every single precinct east of IH 35 voted in favor of the bond. So, to say that the bond failed, or that the bond was not thrown out, or that these votes were not invalidated or thrown out, is simply incorrect. However, as I said, it is time to move forward, and that is why I appreciate this bond. Events like this are why people don't trust government. People on the east side have been fighting for decades to get these roads fixed. And finally, when it was in our grasp, what happened? A lawsuit by four people had that overturned. This is why people don't trust when politicians and governments say, "We're going to fix your roads." You know, when I was campaigning, people were so frustrated about the fact that nothing was happening for the east side, that nothing was getting fixed. And yet, when finally we had the opportunity to do so, that was taken away. So, I am very happy that this is going to encourage the county to fix the roads and encourage the city to do everything that they can to encourage the county to do so. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hill. At this time, the citizen comments period is now closed. Let's move on to agenda order. Does anyone have any items that they wish to move around on the agenda?
Mayor Proton, I'd like to move up agenda item 18 to after the parks proclamation. There's several folks here that would probably be interested in it.
18, I believe we are gonna be postponing.
Sorry, 19, my bad.
Oh.
I'm sorry. I'm just worried.
Okay, 19. All right. Does anyone have any problem with that? 19. You have a problem with that?
Okay.
Okay.
So, I'm proud to be bringing forward this proclamation. The reason why is that I've seen firsthand the importance of our open spaces, our parks, and the staff who maintain and build those and care for them. They're an important part of our city. During COVID, was the first time I really took a big notice on how important our trails and our parks were there. The reason why, people were secluded, and we were trying to distance ourselves. People were in their homes, they were practically prisoners. And to see people now being able to go out in the trails and be, you know, more than five feet apart, we didn't have all the science, we didn't have all the data. People were living day by day in fear. And to be able to get out and the community and take advantage of these open spaces was really important. And moving forward, it's about health, mental health, it's physical health, it's everything that's in between that really makes a community and sets it apart. Our parks, the dedication that the city of Kyle is putting into our parks is really commendable. It's important, and the reason why is we need parks and open spaces. As we continue to develop, it helps us with not only our children, it's adults, it's everyone that's able to take advantage of these places. And it's places now that help with our, as we get more concrete going on, it gives us safe zones, and it helps keep down the emissions and heats in our city. So, really, really important to have parks and open spaces. It's great to have a, the Kyle has a resolution that they've, any construction done needs to have a pocket park within four minutes' walking distance of their residents. And that's a really important thing that we added to our, what do you call it, our building code. But on top of that, it's about the men and women who maintain these parks and do our programming. Just this past week, I was able to witness something wonderful that our Parks Department did. They started a T-ball team, and I've been a part of organized sports for a lot of years, and it's great, but it's real competitive. I'll tell you right now, for the first time in my life, I saw kids just having fun, first-time kids that never played ball, that parents had never been a part of this process, come out and be a part of this T-ball league that the city started. And it was great to hear the feedback, to hear the parents, to hear the parents talk about the investment we made on our fields. That's a, that's a direct impact on the city's willingness to improve our parks and make them better. But it's the people behind the scenes that make them better. It's our park staff, it's our park director and everybody beneath him that work really hard out in the sun, that are doing things to improve our parks and bring in more programming. It's really great. So, with that, I just want to say to our Parks Department, thank you. Thank you for what you do for our city. It's really important, and thank you for your hard work. With that, I'd love to read this proclamation. City Council Proclamation. Whereas parks and recreation programs are integral part of our communities throughout the country, including Kyle, Texas, and whereas parks and recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and whereas parks and recreation promotes time spent in nature, which possibly impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviating illness such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And whereas parks and recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pool, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas parks and recreation is leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education. Whereas parks and recreation programming and... Whereas parks and recreation programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, environmental education, critical to childhood development. Whereas parks and recreation increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction of retention of business, and crime reduction. And parks and recreation is fundamental to the environment, well-being of our community. And whereas parks and recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. Whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children, adults, to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designed July as Park and Recreation Month. And whereas Kyle, Texas recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore be proclaimed by the Kyle City Council in July as recognition of Parks and Recreation Month. Anybody else?
Thank you, Councilmember Rizzo. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to say?
Thank you, parks guys, or ladies and gentlemen that work there. We've seen some, some good improvements in, in our park area, especially Lake Kyle. We're excited about the soon-to-be ribbon cutting for that. And but to go off of Councilmember Rizzo, it's very important that we appreciate all our parks that we have in our city. And we want to say thank you for all your hard work, for all you do. Thank you.
I just want to say, there's a lot of people in this audience from the Parks Department that I see rather frequently either in the field or at the city admin buildings, and they're always a joy to be around. I mean that. It sounds kind of lame to hear myself say that, but I really enjoy the people that the city has hired and have put in place to create great experiences for our kids and, and adults, but mostly our kids, I would say. And I'm just very thankful. My kids spend a lot of time with park staff through the camps and the basketball programs and some other things, and they love it, and they can't wait to do it again next year. So I think we're very lucky to have such a great group of people running our parks. So thank you guys very much.
All right, next item on the agenda, item number four, receive a report, hold a discussion, and provide staff direction regarding the twenty-twenty-five Charter Review Commission's recommendations for amendments for the November fourth, twenty-twenty-five special election. Ms. Alcorn Reed.
Good evening, Mayor Proton, members of council. Amy Alcorn Reed, City Attorney for the Record. We're here today to talk about some of the good work that our Charter Review Commission has done for the city over the past six months. And today, I have with me Diane Herval, who's the Chair of the Commission, as well as several members of the Commission. I see Ms. Knight, Ms. Ford, Mr. Kirkwood here in the audience. I'm going to hand this over to Ms. Herval to provide some notes on the recommendations from the Commission, and I'll stand by for questions if needed.
Okay. Council, I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to present this evening. How do I move this slide? Okay. The Charter Review Commission began meeting on January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, and met approximately twice a month through June. We held ten meetings and nine public hearings. We only had one comment from one citizen during that time, and we appreciate his comments. The Charter Review Commission is recommending several amendments to the charter to be included in the special election on November fourth, twenty-twenty-five. In multiple sections throughout the charter, the Commission has recommended simplifying complicated or verbose language, often just referencing state law. Council term, the first one, I want to highlight a couple, council term limits. The Commission is recommending a change to section three point oh three to reduce the term limits for city councils so that no city council member may serve more than three consecutive regular terms as a council member, or as mayor, or in any combination Recall limitation, changing number of times a council member may be subject to a recall petition during a term from three to two as an amendment to section six point one three. We kind of felt that during your term, they shouldn't be recalled three times. Another item we wanted to bring forward to you is the consideration of an internal auditor. We would like to recommend the addition of section eight point one five, which would specifically allow the city council to create the position of city auditor as a full-time staff member, who would be appointed, supervised, and removed by the majority vote of city council. Also, term limits for planning commission, changing term limit of planning commission in section ten point oh four from five years to four years, except as needed to file an unexpired term. Uh-oh, I went blank. Also, limitation of council members accepting employment with the city, addition of new, a new section, twelve point oh six, which prohibits a former council member from accepting a position as a city employee for two years after leaving, leaving city council. Changes to the charter requirements, change, change to section thirteen eight point oh eight, require Charter Review Commission every sixth year instead of every fifth year. We made it on even years instead of odd years. We're looking for, of course, city council direction on the amendments for a special election on November fourth, calling the election in August. That concludes my presentation, but I'd like, if I may, I'd like to thank, take a moment to thank my fellow commissioners. We all have twenty-four hours in a day, and your willingness to dedicate time and energy to serve was truly appreciated. Also, I'd like to give a special thank you to Jennifer and Amy for their research expertise and consistent support through this process. I believe I speak on behalf of my commissioners when I say that your contributions have made our work more efficient and effective. Thank you again for entrusting us, my fellow commissioners. With this responsibility, we look forward to your continued discussions and future recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herval, and thank you all for your service to this commission. Really glad that I got to hear and read through and get feedback from all of you, or not all of you guys, but some of you guys throughout this process. Let's open it up. Councilmember Harris.
Quick question. The slide said major changes. Were there minor changes that aren't included in those slides as well? And if so, what are they?
There, there were quite a few. Some of them were as simple as, we have a provision that's referred to as minute orders, but everything in that provision refers to motions. And so the idea was to pick one word and not have it called one and repeat another. There's a lot of little stuff like that. These are really the biggest ones. But we can, I can send out a red line of what they've done. They've reviewed a red line. We went, we went through every article one by one. Yeah, we did skip this slide, so I was bringing it back up. So that one would allow, under state law, if we have a vacancy in city council with less than twelve months left in their term, we can, we can adjust by charter how that vacancy is filled. Right now, we would have to have an election within a hundred and twenty days. So if you resign, say, in June, and your term is supposed to end in November, well, now we have to have an election before November to be within the hundred and twenty days and then still have the general election in November. And so the idea is to avoid that. The recommendation from the Commission was then to set the election on the next available uniform election date, which would be May or November. The Commission also recommended a change to four point oh three, which would allow council to both confirm the appointment and the removal of the Finance Director, and would require five affirmative votes. Currently requires four affirmative votes, and council only has the authority to, to confirm the removal of the Finance Director. And then there were some changes to the initiative and referendum process, and this was, this was actually my recommendation. And the reason for it is the current initiative and referendum process requires the, the person who's bringing the petition to go get all the votes circulated before the city attorney is required to review it. And I thought it made sense to put that in the beginning so that if the city attorney reviews it and says, "Hey, this isn't subject initiative, this isn't subject referendum, or there's an issue with this initiative because it violates the First Amendment of the Constitution, and here's why," we don't want them to go circulate and get thousands of signatures and then me to just say, "Oh, never mind," because the way the charter's currently written is, and then I would say, "It's not authorized," and then it wouldn't proceed. We're trying to push that earlier.
And has everything been reviewed according to the new state laws? Is there anything we'll need to come back?
I don't think there's anything else that needs to come back. There were a few discussions where we talked about, here's pending litigation, legislation, and here's kind of how that would interplay. But most, most of the changes we've made have been just to reference state law, because we have a lot of paragraphs that are really, really long and have a lot of detail, and that detail may not necessarily be required under state law. And so what we wanted to do is just remove that and say we do it in accordance with state law.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tobias.
Okay. Again, I just want to get clarification on the six-year, from the five-year to six-year on the charter review. Why did, why did they decide to want to just do it odd years versus even year?
The current charter provision requires city council review every two years and charter commission review every five years, and that didn't line up. So the idea was to put them so that they would be a multiple of two.
Okay.
But it would line up together.
All right, then I'm going to go with, I'll bring it up now, since we're talking about the charter itself. Section three point oh nine for Brian and for the city, that is the compensation committee, since we're talking about the charter. It says here, "Each member of council shall receive a compensation for the services the salary established by ordinance adopted after two public hearings and an approved budget. Changes to the council salary shall only be considered once every three years and shall be considered only after a recommendation is made by, by a council-appointed committee." Kind of seeing where we're at on that, because I know this was a big topic last year. So now we're coming to the middle of the year to kind of see where we're at, since we're following along the charter guidelines.
Yes, sir. So the council can form a committee, and we could bring an item back to you to form a committee. You would make selections of who would serve on that committee, allow them a few weeks. I don't know exactly how long it might take, maybe four to six weeks to do some work, some benchmarking, and to look at what type of recommendations they would want to make on compensation that could then come back to you. And you could decide if you wanted to accept those recommendations, make modifications. But we could certainly do that for you in the next few months if council wants to do that process to move forward with it.
I'd like to go ahead and do that. Would that be a motion that need be made?
No, sir. We can bring that, put that as an action item for you at the next agenda. We can bring that back for you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And I think that was it. There was a financial director question, but I, I think I'm okay with that. That should be good. Thank you, Diane Herval, for your, for your dedication, Ms. Forte as well. Appreciate everything.
Diane, yes, I did have a question, two questions. So what is the, the role of the city auditor that y'all had imagined or envisioned for, for putting that in the charter as a recommendation?
As a typical auditor of any governmental entity, that, you know, we're growing leaps and bounds, and at some point, we feel an auditing department would, would be beneficial, especially with some, with transparency and just making sure that the finances are in order.
Well, I think, I think that's a solid recommendation. I mean, with, you know, a lot of the things, a lot of projects that move around, sometimes we don't know what the spending is. And so sometimes we, it is helpful to have, I guess, someone internally that sees more than every day-to-day. So I think that that's a solid recommendation. The two-year period before a council member seeks employment with the city?
Can I, before we jump to another item on here, can I ask a question about the?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Brian, how would, how would this be? Because I know we get a financial audit every year that I think was presented last at the first budget workshop. How, how does this either work alongside or possibly replace? Can, can you give us any insight?
So you're required by law and charter to have a third-party independent financial audit each year, and we do that. There's a firm that does that. They report to the city council, not to, not to me or any of my staff. They don't report to the Finance Director. They report to you. They come and make a presentation of the process they're going to go through for the audit. They then perform the audit and come back and provide any findings or recommendations of what they believe needs to be changed. I think we had that presentation March timeframe, if I remember right, something like that for annually that we do that. An internal auditor position, some cities do have them. They're typically larger cities, but they are positions that would supplement the work of internal auditor, excuse me, of external auditors, and they would do additional assignments and additional work in organizations, looking at different processes. But I think either one can work. My, my recommendation is you think about what is the, what's the purpose, what are the types of things that you would want to do? And, and those could be assigned to the external auditor, or you could have an internal auditor that you could have as an employee that reports to you, that could do that work as well. But either, either program can work if you know what your goals are and what you, what you're trying to accomplish. So that, I think, yeah, would start, my recommendation is you'd start there to think about what you'd want to accomplish, and then you could find the model that works best for you.
And who would this auditor report to? You or the council?
I, I think the recommendation is that they would report directly to the council, is my understanding.
That's our recommendation.
Did you guys ever talk about, like, a job description or any sort of, no? Like confinement of what they would do? Okay. And is procedurally, if we were to accept this, how would we then define what type of full-time position we're creating?
Yeah, I, I think you would have to have quite a bit of discussion about exactly what you would want the assignments to be, what's the salary level that you're looking for, the type of program that you're trying to implement. I think you would need some discussion about that.
So there were some requirements that the Commission recommended putting in for this city auditor. The primary requirement was that they either be a certified public accountant or a certified internal auditor and have experience with municipal budgeting.
Okay. Do, I mean, do we have enough time to put that together? I mean, because all that needs to be ironed out before ballot language can be created, correct?
Right. It's so, my recommendation for you this evening is, is that you receive the report from the Commission, you have some discussion about those items, and that based on your feedback tonight, we can put another item on the agenda for you to have more additional discussion on it, perhaps on July fifteenth or the first meeting in August, you could have more discussion and then decide at that time what information or what items that you'd want to put on a ballot. You may want to accept the entire set of recommendations from the Commission, or some or none. So those are options that you still have available to you. But that'd be my recommendation is for us to bring that back and some, perhaps some options for each one of these for you to consider.
Okay.
The other note I want to make about-
Others that you may have as well.
The other note I want to make about the auditor provision is that it is an optional provision, so it's put in to give council the option to add that position in the future when it determines it's necessary. It's not an immediate add of a position.
So it's something in theory we could put, create ballot language for and then figure out the job description when the time comes?
Maybe not add an auditor for a couple of years or whenever we're ready.
Is that, Diane, does that sound like- Is that, Diane, does that sound like reasonable based on what you guys have discussed?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Back to you, Mr. Zuniga.
Thank you, Mr. Zuniga. Second, just to get clarification on council term limits. Is the intent there to not have someone serve more than nine years consecutively only? What about not consecutive terms? I mean, what is it that we're getting with, we're getting at with this one, with the council term limits?
I think it was three consecutive terms.
That would be nine years of service.
That would be nine years.
Okay.
Now, if you served, okay, take me for example. I served back in 2010 to 2016. If I chose to run now, my, I would assume my clock starts ticking all over again for three terms.
And so are we trying to limit that to only nine years?
Consecutively.
Okay.
It means that if you wanted to run for mayor, you could only be mayor for two terms?
Yes, if you chose to do that now.
So this is, I would encourage people, I guess, to take that break, I mean, and run later?
Yeah, we talked about having, you know, take a break if you chose to do it again, or if you chose, if you were a council member and you wanted to run for mayor, take a break and then come back.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to see where we're getting at with the council term.
It's consecutive terms. It's not until tell.
Okay.
I, I have some comments on that one, and then we can keep going down the line if anyone else. I would just, my thoughts on that is, it feels like it, I understand that you're talking about taking a break. And I, you know, as someone who would be on the ballot this year, I think of like, what would happen if I took a break and then tried to come back? And how your life, and you, you know, your life changes and you're going to, you know, find other things to, it just doesn't feel easy when I hear you say it and I'm thinking about things. It's like, is taking a break really that easy? Is it discouraging any experience that I would get or any of these other people up here would get if they were to, you know, if this weren't a, a rule? Like, you know, discourages him from, I mean, it just changes, I'm sorry, I keep pointing. You just happen to sit right next to me.
I think it was to give the opportunity to have a, a fresh, perhaps, candidate to serve. Not necessarily to say, you know, after nine years, I know none of you guys are quite there yet. Michael's getting close. But, you know, after nine years, I think that we were trying to put in the charter, you know, that it was time, perhaps, to give the constituents the opportunity to change that position.
Couldn't they just do that by voting out whomever would, the example would be in this instance?
That, that's true. Or, you know what the voter turnout is in Kyle?
Well, is it our job to correct that by statute?
No, I'm, I'm just saying that it's, you know, term limits have been in the charter. And we were just trying to limit it to so many terms, and we felt that the three terms was sufficient.
If I could just add, and use me for example, I'm on my final term. Because I was, I won a special election in 2020. In part of the charter, you, if you serve a full year before your next election, that will be considered your term. So I've already done the first term, my first year, ran unopposed in '21, ran unopposed in '24. So I, I understand where you come from, Ms. Herbal, because it gives that person the, the opportunity to serve, but it also gives me a term limit to where it's like, okay, it's time to step down and allow somebody else to run in your district versus continuously. I think a lot of us know that there's maybe, not to throw political, but that's what we see in the Senate and the House and Reps, where you have continuous people that have been serving for 30 years and so forth. I know we're not at that, that level, but I think it just makes it more a robust field where you want to be able to serve your terms up to, up to, up to the nine years and then take a break and so forth. But it also prevents, it's like, if you're down to your final year, that you decide to run for at-large, and then that gives you additional, it just, you want to be able to find a sense of balance in that sense. Sorry.
Michael, if you're gone, then who's going to take your spot?
Mayor Protem.
I know, I know there's people out there that would.
Mayor Protem.
I have faith.
All right, councilmembers.
Oh, yeah. I don't think you can run for an at-large seat after you served your terms. Is that allowed in the charter right now?
No. No, it's not. You can, you can run for mayor. So if you've served three terms as council, you can then serve three terms as mayor. But you can't switch from one place to council to another.
I was going to say, I don't think that's allowed. So, yeah, if I remember right.
Yeah, it's one thing to run, but you also got to get elected. You may not get elected.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, you know, honestly, the voters are the ones that determine that. I'm, I understand where that's going. I understand what you're trying to do. I mean, we see it. I look at term limits at the House and Senate thinking, boy, we should add more term limits there, right? Because there's career politicians, and that's something we want to avoid. The only, the only concern I have is that, look, I'm good with the nine-year, the three terms for a council member. That's, that's perfect. You serve three terms as a council member and leave. It doesn't affect me because I did leave for a year involuntarily. That were good. But anyway, what do you call it? I, I actually started over. My clock started over. So I, in essence, I could still run two more terms after this term if I had the energy. We'll see how it goes at the end of this term. But anyway, well, what I was talking about is, my only concern is that the only thing that worries me is is you get a mayor that's inexperienced, and then the developer wins. And that's what I don't want to see, is development winning over what's best for the city. And that's, that's kind of what I worry about, is getting someone that's not a mayor that just comes off the block, right? But I guess you would have other council members that might have the experience. But that, that's one of the things I, I've noticed that when you don't have an experience, when you have a young council, developers win. When you have a seasoned council, then the city wins, the residents win. So that's the only concern I have here. Did y'all talk about that at all, Ms. Herbal?
Not in that context that you just presented, but I think that we discussed it pretty much in depth in the sense that if, you know, there could be a scenario that many of you decide to vacate or, in 2010, there were, I think there was-
Five positions, is it right, whatever it is?
It was, it was either three the first year and two the second year, but the council turned over and perhaps-
Even after developing, we had those going on.
We had a lot going on in 2010. There was a lot going on. But you, you know, that's, if that should happen, you know, you're going to have, I would hope that you have other council members and staff to rely on to, to get you up to speed. I know when I was elected, and I'm sure when all y'all were elected, there were different staff that you, you either leaned on or even your fellow council members. Or you, you get knowledge in different methods, serving on committees, doing different things, different activities. Your knowledge comes from so many different places, and you have to be able to decipher all the information that's coming in for yourself. So I feel like that you're going to have many different venues to get, to gain that knowledge.
Okay. Yeah, and I, I respect what you're telling me. You, you've served on councils, so I really respect your opinion. One of the things, just going off of the experience I've noticed, I've noticed, I've been a part of a lot of councils now, and I've seen young councils and councils that are seasoned and seen, you know, what the difference is. And I, I do have that concern, and I, I kind of saw that here recently as well. But, yeah, it's just tough when you have a very young council, you don't have as many seasoned council members on there because the developer wins. I'm just going to say it plain and loudly, the developer does win. And, because you don't have those council members that are on staff that are going to say, you know what, this is bad development. Just one example is when you look at projects, when you don't put timelines on projects. We just had a project here a while back where the developer wanted to build his multifamily and then his retail afterwards, and we had already learned from that. You know, the seasoned council members had learned that, you know what, that's not going to happen. He's going to build his multifamily. We're not going to get the retail. So it's, instances like that that I kind of, kind of concern me. If you don't have a mayor that's, that's been through the process, is now termed out. Say a council member like Tobias, Mr. Tobias, who would be a really good mayor, I think, would be great. But, you know, now he's termed out, you're not giving him that option. It definitely, he's got the experience. And now we're going to bring somebody new in, and it's, that's, I think so is. It wouldn't affect me because I, I took a year off, so it wouldn't even affect me. So I'm not talking about myself right now. I'm just worried about not having that seasoned mayor on, on the dais. And that, I would like your thoughts on that one, please.
You don't think, well, I would think that, you know, I, I see many of the staff members. I feel like that they're, they're very professional. They're, the current staff that you have now is, you know, highly educated. And you have, you know, a larger staff to choose from than when I was on council. And I feel like that, you know, I feel like, you know, there's always, when you're a new council member, there's council, there's the class council 101. And I think you get a basic understanding. And, and you also get, you, you have many different opportunities to get the experience. I feel like if the staff is here and they're, they're paid to protect the citizens of, of Kyle, I think that they'll help the council members and give them the information that they need to make the proper decision on behalf of the constituents that they serve.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your honest answer. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Councilmember Kenny.
Is there wording that specifies like how big the gap needs to be? Is it a full term in between court resets?
The language provided was just consecutive. If you, like Councilmember Rizzo said, if you take a year off, term restarts.
I was trying to think of that, that bizarre what-if, like you resign three months left in your third term.
So I've, I've actually, I've actually been through that in a city, and it was a complicated situation. But generally speaking, you're going to hold over until you're replaced, and so that would be the argument at that point.
Just want to make sure nobody tries to circumvent what we're trying to accomplish.
We actually had a similar conversation about that with the Charter to the Commission on the, some recommendations to the ethics provisions and when, when council members could appoint and how many days before the end of the term they were allowed to appoint. It got really, really in the weeds. So that's kind of how you get there.
All right. Anybody else? No? All right.
I just want to say thank you to Diane and every, all the members of the Charter Review Commission for the time, the hours y'all put in and for reviewing such an important piece of a document that basically is the, the baseline rules for the government and our roles here up on council to make sure a city is operating effectively. So thank you for that, for that time and commitment and for your expertise in reviewing everything.
Same. I, I watched every meeting, and a lot of work went into it. I appreciate every single one of you. There were some entertaining parts of it.
Yeah, we did have some lively discussions, and so we appreciate that. And I, I feel like we were respectful of one another. There was-
Agreed.
No tempers flying or food flying or anything.
All right. Thank you all. All right, moving on. Next up is Agenda Item 5, receive a report, hold a discussion, and provide staff feedback regarding an overview of the current status of the 2025 City of Kyle Mobility Plan. Mr. Mike Trimble.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. Mike Trimble, Director of Transportation and Public Works. As you may recall, on April 1st, council approved a contract to move forward with the development of the Transportation Master Plan, which we are rebranding as the Kyle Mobility Plan, so you hear that a lot tonight. But since that time, we kicked off project activities soon after you approved that contract. And so they've been busy. The team's been busy doing work over the last couple of months. And so we're here tonight, along with our consultant, Jake Guttenkust with Goodman Corporation, to give an update on those activities and to talk about some of the next steps coming up.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. As, as Mike kind of alluded to, he let the cat out of the bag a little early here, but I'll kind of jump to it. Is kind of going over the Transportation Master Plan and the history in Kyle. The last time there was a really comprehensive look at this with, with a kind of a lot of public engagement and thinking through it was 2016. So it's been about 10 years since the kind of first, the last major overhaul. In 2021, there was an update done that was more focused on the, the map itself for future roadways, for projects. It was kind of a smaller, a minor update effort. So now we're here to, to do a full crack open and relook at everything as part of this process. As Mike mentioned, we, we did come up with a, a new name for this that we thought was simpler, but also kind of encompassed all modes of transportation. Mobility's been kind of a, a better all-encompassing word that's been used from other communities, and we kind of settled on working through that with, with, with staff. We also have the K-mark in the logo. You can kind of see that here on, on the right. It's kind of simplistic, but it's kind of gets the point across about moving forward with that. In terms of where we're at and where we're headed, so I'll get to this in a minute, but we are starting this month our first round of engagement on this. And I will talk about, there's been a lot of other engagement efforts, and there's probably some fatigue in the community. So we'll talk about that a little bit and how we're managing a lot of different engagement going on. But we're currently looking at kind of needs in the community from, from our expertise as transportation planners and engineers throughout the community. Just last week, I was driving around all the streets, kind of experiencing it from, from a driver's view and walking some areas as well. And so we're, we're starting to kind of get ideas, understandings of things as we go through this process. And through this first round of engagement, we'll wrap up at the end of next month, and then we'll be going back to work kind of for a few months and coming back to the community with some recommendations in the first quarter of next year with the plan to bring this, this plan back around March of next year for consideration by council. So that's kind of our, our general roadmap of where we're headed. I mentioned a lot of planning that's been going on in Kyle. And so a, a big kind of point of what we're trying to do here at this first stage is really understand what's already been planned and not try to replan those things. There's been a sidewalk plan. You guys have a community survey that y'all just did that was really comprehensive. It's statistically significant from ETC earlier this year. So we don't want to go out to the community and ask the same questions they just got asked. We're going to try to make sure we pull what we just got from that and use those things effectively. We also want to make sure we're carrying out the goals, objectives, and strategies from the comprehensive plan as part of this process and kind of putting some flesh on those bones that were put together recently. We also acknowledge there's a lot of other stuff going on, and so we're going to try to collaborate across efforts. One thing for the Goodman Corporation is we're also helping run and lead the Kyle 314 Rideshare Program study that's ongoing. You'll hear more about that here in a few months, but, but we are internally collaborating and making sure we, we are efficient about that. In a minute, you're going to hear about the UDC from, from Chance after me. And then obviously, there's already been some discussion about the Hayes County Road Bond, but also the, the city's road bond that's ongoing. So there's a lot of things happening. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to corral that and bring it down to simple, straightforward topics and try to boil that down for folks and make sure we're not repeating or overdoing things that are happening at the same time. In terms of a, a vision statement, we've been working on a staff with this to come up with something simple, but if you see some words here that you're familiar with, that's intentional. We try to kind of align this with the, the council's vision about being the undisputed regional leader in vehicular pedestrian and multimodal mobility. And then also kind of a second sentence in here was intentional to say that a, a big piece of the plan is to really be proactive in strategies and not be reactive to, to things as they occur as we go forward in, in the community. So that's kind of a draft vision statement. We can come back to that later for discussion if y'all want to spend some time on that. In terms of plan goals, we have tried to also align these with the, the comprehensive plan. There's a lot of great work that was done as part of that effort in the last year and a half, two years ago. And so what we've tried to do is kind of link these things together. So one of the goals that we've talked about working with staff is making data-informed decision-making. We're going to have a lot of detailed analysis to look at how much of that growth is going to really impact the existing roads, where those future proposed roads are going to go. Are they big enough? Are they going to be able to handle the traffic? Are they going to be able to do things with some pretty detailed modeling? So we'll be doing that as part of this process and bringing those results back to y'all in future meetings. We want to make sure that we're telling the story of Kyle and being Kyle, but not anywhere. We know there's a lot of ambition about being one of the safest community in Texas, but also providing mobility options for people to get around. Y'all are pretty, really, really on the forefront, tip of the spear with your, the trails plan or the vibe trails and trying to incorporate those things into the, the long-term vision here and think through those about what's unique about Kyle and tell that story. Getting the big stuff right, we want to make sure that we're investing it, making investments where it serves people best. So looking through things from a performance lens, right? Once we get later in the process and have some projects identified, we're going to look at different performance measures and, and look and see how projects perform against each other. In terms of clear expectations and consistent predictable, sorry, consistent predictable decisions- decisions, we wanna create supportive policies. You can have projects, you can have plans, but you also need policies. So we're gonna be working with the code team and coming up with recommendations as they work through their process to make sure these things line up. And then another big one for us is making sure that we're really working to make sure the community's a part of this, but not only that they're a part of it, but that they see where their fingerprints are on the ultimate product. And so one of the things we're gonna do is, as we go through this first phase of engagement, we're gonna come back when we have recommendations and show the community where their ideas actually made it into the plan and kind of show that that feedback loop has been closed. A couple other things that we talked about was being thriving, active, and healthy, really focusing on on local and regional connectivity. And I'll talk more in a second about how, one of our strategies for that. And then I mentioned previously about integrating prior planning efforts so you don't have recommendations in three or four different documents. It'll be in one place, so you're not having to look at a sidewalk plan, a trails plan, a transportation plan for all these different things. We just opened, literally hot off the press yesterday, our our first round of engagement. We intentionally made our survey very short. I mentioned a minute ago that we know there's been a lot of opportunities for that. We don't wanna wear people out and really just fill in some gaps where we don't already have information. So these shouldn't be repeat questions that they saw a few months ago on the community survey or on the sidewalk plan last year. So we're gonna, we're gonna really use that database well. There is an interactive map for folks to leave specific comments about issues that they're seeing with some categories. And then as part of our strategy, instead of doing a big kind of open house format, we wanna try to meet people where they're already gonna be. And so we're gonna come out to the community, set up some booths, we're working with the Parks Department to have some some locations where we can be at two of the upcoming market days during this period and come out to the movies and the parks to kind of meet and greet with some of those families in your community that might be coming out. We will talk more later on about the the second phase where we bring the recommendations. We will have an open house, public meeting kind of style for that. And again, I mentioned earlier, we're gonna try to make sure we close that feedback loop, feedback loop and show people where their voices were heard at the end of the process. I mentioned earlier about local and regional connectivity. One of the things that we wanna do, and it is increasing in importance with some of the recent events last week with the Hayes County Bond, is really trying to be collaborative with adjacent cities to Kyle, the county, working with Campo, with Tech Dot. And so we've reached out to representatives from all these agencies and are kind of cobbling together a group to sit down and really just talk about regionality with projects, issues, making sure that planning doesn't just stop at the city limit line, but it actually connects and collaborates across those those imaginary lines as we do our planning process. We'll be meeting with them this fall and kind of going through some some project development discussions with them. And the next steps before we get to questions, so really, we're gonna, we're gonna wrap up the first phase of our engagement by the end of August. So there's two months for folks to be able to fill out stuff. We felt that was a good, good length of time and window for folks to give feedback and also allows the, to bridge the summer vacations that maybe folks are having with school and make sure that goes all the way through the end of August. We're gonna be doing quite a bit of technical analysis over that period as well and have our first meeting with the technical advisory group. And then when we come back to y'all, we're gonna kind of share the results of kind of what we're finding from a technical standpoint, from our expertise, maybe some of those policy ideas, recommendations, things that we're starting to find, some low-hanging fruit that could really make an impact in the community, as well as summary of what we're hearing from the community. So that's where we're headed. This is kind of a short briefing today, but yeah, just wanted to talk through those. We can certainly go back to to vision and goals if you'd like to talk more about that or other things. Here for your questions. Yeah.
Let's open it up. Councilmember Harris.
I have two things. One, I really like the emphasis on interconnectivity. I'm really concerned that it's very difficult for our residents to get to San Marcos, Buta, or South Austin. And a lot of our medicals are there. The other thing that I would like some focus on is that transportation for senior and disabled people in our community, it may be different. I know road design needs to incorporate that. And the availability of transportation needs to incorporate that as well as the cost of transportation. So I would really like to have some definite goals related to senior and disabled in the plan.
Thank you for that feedback. We'll incorporate that.
Councilmember Zinnega.
Thank you, Jake. I was just looking at some of the, like the things you're gonna be looking at, the crash hotspots, the where the gaps are for the barriers of walking and biking and existing deficiencies. I think some of the deficiencies could be like the poor lighting areas around roadways, some of the poor blind spots and, you know, where where we have a lot of bottleneck traffic areas. So we can see those, I guess, mentioned in here. So that that way, we're putting a focus on that as we're, you know, engaging the community but getting their feedback to where, where these other, you know, critical, important aspects of the roadways are.
Yeah, and so just to repeat that back to you, so the lighting, the visibility, kinda locations in bottlenecks are kind of all things you'd like to hear more about in the analysis, for sure.
I know there are a lot of areas where people will right turn on red, cuz it's, it's, it looks pretty safe, so. And then there's some areas where that's, you really can't do it because you might get hit head-on. Just last week, I saw a bad accident on 1626. Right there, it was like two cars totally hit right at that that signalized light. Looked pretty bad. So, yeah, if we can see, you know, where those, where those problem areas are, that'd be, that'd be good to have.
Thank you, Councilmember.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
All right. All right, next step on the agenda is Item Number Six. Receive a report, hold a discussion, and provide staff feedback regarding the direction, regarding the city's Unified Development Code. The presenter will be Ms. McCollum.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Council. Melissa McCollum, Chief Development Officer. I'm excited to kind of talk to you about where we're at with the Unified Development Code. I think it's very apropos that it's kind of following the the Mobility Plan. You can really kind of see how we're gonna work in conjunction with with some of the great planning efforts that we go on or have going on. And with that, I'll pass it over to Chance.
Thank you very much, Melissa. Chance Parks, Fraser Nichols. And really excited to be here this evening to give you an update on the Development Code, some next steps, and also to talk to you a little bit about how we, how we'd like to receive feedback from you as a council as we go forward. So again, just to reinforce the the project team, I'm here as the principal in charge. I'm also effectively functioning as a project manager because I like development codes. And I'm passionate about them and I'm also here with Evan from our our team as well. We are leading against this again from the San Marcos office, so trying to be as local as possible gives us the familiarity we need. Again, this is a best practice approach that y'all are employing here. We're going to keep telling you that because it's a really great example for others. You're bringing together your engineering manual, your development codes, all at one time, so it all talks to each other. When we tackle this, we focus on making things user-friendly, making sure it's defensible, making sure your development process functions well, and finding those right innovative solutions along the way. What we found in our experience, if you get process, procedures, things like that right, then everything else really does fall into place. Your developers will work with you better to move towards your community vision as you go forward. We're in the code diagnostic phase right now, which means this is the phase where we are taking your development regulations and breaking them apart, looking for literally how to break them, what is not working, what's not getting you the results you want, but also looking towards what are the missed opportunities that happen along the way. When we, when we do this, we focus first on your planning efforts. We've been going through all of your adopted plans. One of the things we'd like to compliment the City of Kyle on is the order that things were tackled in. You've just adopted a fresh comprehensive plan, your Parks Recreation Open Space Plan is hot off the press, and we're already coordinating with Jake on the transportation components to bring in his diagnostic elements with this. It's gonna make for a really smooth code writing process. We're also talking with a lot of stakeholder groups. We've already been talking with the Plains Zoning Commission, Economic Development Board, and we are working on, I think may have finalized the schedule this evening, for additional stakeholder engagement next week, focusing on design professionals, real estate, small business owners, and a variety of others. Because we wanna get all these perspectives from all types of code users along the way. To kind of bring it to give y'all some perspective on what we're hearing so far is with, especially with Plains Zoning Commission, they were very forthcoming about what they wanna see for future development types. Again, nothing that should surprise you. You're fresh off the comprehensive plan, so a focus on mixed-use communities, walkable, tree shade, supporting multimodal transportation came right out to the forefront in that conversation. They thought about, what are the things that we're not as excited about? It's the ma, the massive logistic parks and warehouses. There's concern about data centers and the complexity that they bring in terms of infrastructure as well as jobs per, jobs per square foot essentially. And kind of a concern about uncontrolled sprawl, low density, and thinking a lot about the east side of Kyle and what development outcomes have been happening out there, what could go better in the future. So big summary, they want the code to align much more closely with community goals out of the plans. That's one of the things we asked was, are you comfortable with everything you saw in your comprehensive plan? That was a very strong resounding yes. They wanna see housing and economic diversity. This gets into a variety of conversations with that. We heard mention of people with disabilities, seniors and things like that for transportation. That carries straight into development regulation as well. How to incentivize quality, sustainability? How do you get flexibility in design, but also get a level of certainty with the quality that's gonna come out the other side? And making sure that ultimately the math works on these projects for the city and for the developer, quite honestly. And making sure that you've got a good predictable environment. When somebody enters the development process, they should have reasonable certainty of what's gonna happen at the end of that development process along the way. They wanna see strengthened landscape standards. This is especially focused on on water conservation elements and recognizing the the environment that we're in today. Tree preservation and protection and dark sky concepts were something that was of great interest. We always talk about with dark sky, it doesn't mean that there'll be just lots of less lighting. It means the lighting you have will be efficient and focused along the way. What we get to tonight, though, is feedback opportunities. One of the things we have learned along the way in doing lots of development code work is it is profoundly unfair to put elected officials on the spot at the dais for what is and isn't working in your development regulations. It can be an uncomfortable conversation. And so what we've actually provided this evening is a code questionnaire. So something you can kind of take home, think about, scribble some notes down, and pass those right back through through your city staff. It's a great way for us to get feedback. It gives you some space to kind of think about it of what's, what have you seen over the years and things like that. In the August-September timeframe, we're gonna have a joint workshop with city council and the Plains Zoning Commission. That's where we're gonna be bringing a consolidation of the diagnostic report findings, hitting on the key areas that we are gonna think are gonna be the biggest influencers in the outcomes of your development code. We're also working on scheduling some community open houses along the way for that. In terms of next steps, big next steps are finishing up the stakeholder input. That should, I think we'll complete that probably next week. That's gonna lead us to turn into the next three to four weeks of really getting the diagnostic report wrapped up, communicated well, designed well, get through a few review cycles with city staff, and have a bigger conversation with you about, did we capture it? Is this the right songbook to sing from as we start moving forward into the code writing process? Along the way, we're gonna have some open houses, we'll do some public event tabling. We're anticipating coordinating with Jake on some of that as well for when they're tabling, we're gonna do it at the same time. Some web-based engagement and then adoption process. So this is what it looks like going forward for us in terms of project schedule. We're about where we expected to be. Where we'll be putting together and finalizing diagnostic in August. You'll notice that we start, the code drafting process in August, too. What we start doing at that point is building the format and building those key pieces that we know are gonna be generally the same. Your general provisions, requirements, things like that to carry through for all development codes, all the state law-enabling language, things like that to get started. And then we move into the more meaty stuff as we go on down the road. So with that, love to answer any questions you might have about expectations, thoughts you have on making sure that you're figuring out how you wanna respond on that handout, anything like that that would be helpful at this time.
Anyone have any questions, comments, concerns?
Looking forward to the, what do you call it, giving the feedback and responses is really what I'm looking forward to. I probably answered my question earlier. We're talking about, you know, the term limits, having this document there, having it in P&amp;Z is probably kind of set my mind at ease when it comes to development, developers. So I needed this presentation before that one, but it would've been great. But no, I'm looking forward to this. Thank you for your hard work and look forward to giving my responses.
Absolutely.
How, how do we get that questionnaire?
The questionnaire, I believe, is in your packet.
It's in the back.
Okay, it's in the back? Where?
But I, we can send it to.
Oh, I, that's why I missed it. Okay. Councilmember Harris.
Do you have a definition for what the different modules will be?
Sure. So, yeah, when we talk about modules, so we kinda talk about how we deliver a code. The worst thing we could do is write the whole code and hand it to you. So the way we tackle the modules is we look at, based on the diagnostic report, what are the most influential pieces of code that are gonna kind of have a ripple effect throughout the rest of the ordinance? And we start with that. So so Module One will be whatever's kind of the most transformative element that's gonna have the most impact elsewhere in the code. And then we build from there. So one of the things that will come out of the diagnostic report is a preliminary identification of how we're gonna deliver each piece of code to make sure that we're doing it in the right order so we don't have to redo work because something big changed down the road.
And we're taking into account all of the changes the legislature may have made?
Yes, absolutely. There's been, there's definitely been some activity. Y'all do have the benefit, you are not a city over 150,000 and a county over 300,000, so you didn't get some of the really meaty stuff. But there was some really significant changes, particularly around notice and protest for zoning that will definitely affect y'all and a few other small things, too. So we're definitely on top of those.
So, yeah, my question would just be, how will, like, so some of the things that we don't have in the themes that we aspire to have in this city, how are you going to invent some sort of code for some of these themes that, you know, P&amp;Z and city council is aligned with? So we're aligned with, you know, having discouraging some of the, the big data centers, the big parks and warehouses, the logistics. Are you, do you have code that speaks to that? Or are you gonna, you know, find something and try to incorporate those those things into it? And this could be a discussion at the workshop that we have together, cuz it's a tricky thing, right? What we can have, we sit up here and and we, we know that development may not be the best fit, but our hands are sort of tied, too. And we may not want it. And it's gonna come up in tonight, just one of these items is specifically that, that I'm ready to speak about. But, you know, our hands are tied. We may not want it, but it has, it's gonna come anyway because it's a property owned and owner has the right to build what they're looking for. You know, we can control zoning. So what, what will you do in our code to help us have, you know, you know, more of a robust code to to those things that, these themes that we want?
Sure. With each issue that you run into in code, there's kind of a spectrum of ways you can approach it. For example, if we're dealing with issues of, you're concerned about like this basic use compatibility, you can address that through changes to your, your allowed permitted uses by zoning district. But at the same time, if you're looking at, you're uncomfortable creating like a non-conforming use out of that, then you can start turning towards creating additional standards that seek to mitigate the impacts that you're trying to address. For example, I'll, I'll pick on data centers because it's kind of front of mind in the region. What we have seen in some code efforts is, okay, we're concerned about this. Is it a concern from an employment standpoint, a concern from utility demand standpoint? When you look at that, then you can look at a couple of tools. You can look at adequate public facility standards, probably something that's a good idea for you anyway. The, the other part you can look at, though, is start looking at net zero requirements for those types of centers. Net zero, net zero power demand, net zero water, some things like that, where you can start changing how they perform to address your challenge. So there's a few different ways to tackle things like that. We also, when we think about getting into quality development, we, part of, one of the conversations we wanna have with developers is what motivates them to want to move towards quality development? Because then you can build in, build in regulatory incentives and things like that. A development code to be effective needs to have carrots and sticks. And so if you And so if you can, if you can build a good system for that, then you can kind of bring your developer along the way. Our goal out of this is to, is to try to create partnerships out of, out of the conversation versus creating adversarial relationships. Uh, but at the same time, you gotta recognize that's gonna happen sometimes. And so you're building the tools for that too. Does that make sense? It's hard, it's hard without getting actually into the code writing, but it's something we're very used to encountering.
Yeah, totally get what you're saying. Uh, work on the partnership, work on the collaboration, but have those variety of tools, as you mentioned, to help get to the result that's beneficial to everyone, all parties. Thank you.
I have a question regarding the, um, the committee questions. What, what did you form them off of?
So, uh, the committee questions are formed off of collaboration with city staff.
Okay.
Uh, and also looking at some of our past experience, things that we've encountered in cities that have similarities to you, very high growth places, uh, or places where you feel like you haven't always gotten the outcomes you wanted, things like that. So it's based off a little bit of our experience, a little bit of your local, on-the-ground experience.
All right, so it, there's some customization to it.
Oh, absolutely.
Wonderful. Anybody else? All right, thank you very much. Look forward to taking that survey. Uh, next up on the agenda, we are going to move up item number, uh, number nineteen. Consider approval of a resolution supporting Hays County improvements to roadways that improve safety, mobility and connectivity for the residents of Kyle. Councilmember Rizzo? And then councilmember Tobias.
Thank you, councilmember. Uh, uh, Mayor Proto, sorry, Kaiser. Yeah, just, um, just a reminder of our background, councilmember Tobias and I both grew up in the city. We've seen a lot of it. I know people retired probably hearing of that, but we, we're proud of it. I mean, we're proud of growing up here. We're proud of being a part of Kyle our entire lives, you know? One thing, though, you get to see everything when you grew up in a city. You get to see the, the positives and the negatives, you know? Just in Kyle, I've witnessed firsthand, Hays County having a historical prioritization of the infrastructure investment on the western side of our county. And I mean, from the twenty-six, twenty sixteen road bond to the twenty twenty park bond, uh, the majority of those dollars were allocated to the western part of our county. Fast forward to twenty twenty-four, you know, I got wind of, uh, the county thinking about going to a road bond. And, you know, as, as quick as we could, the mayor and I started having conversations with councilmember, uh, I'm sorry, county commissioner, Dr. Michelle Cohen and, uh, Commissioner Debbie Inglesby, and started talking about, uh, how do we identify crucial and, uh, you know, uh, roadway projects that, you know, would affect the eastern part of our Kyle, uh, community? And, uh, through that collaboration, we were able to define several road projects. And these are not just road improvements, they're investments in safety, uh, mobility and long overdue regional quality. We, uh, worked really hard on this and it was great to see the collaboration go, taking place. Um, I mean, you know, I'd like to address some of the misinformation that's been circulating online. You know, the recent court ruling was not against the bond itself, it was against language on a posted meeting. Um, where does the buck stop there? I'm just gonna say that. And, uh, then, you know, it's not about the legality of the bond, it was not about public comment, it wasn't, not even about the mo, about the demand that the ruling was on. It was just about the word road, not posted in road bond during the meeting. It's that one little word that killed it. Uh, four, four people were able to take this to court and stop their votes, all these people. You know, but I do want to commend Commissioner Cohen and, uh, for doing some public engagement during this process. She had a couple of meetings here in Kyle and, and, uh, on the eastern part and, uh, definitely, uh, any other commissioners that did that, I want to commend them as well. Uh, this road bond represents the first major county investment in the eastern side of Kyle, in that area that has been long underserved. I mean, let me be clear, we're not gonna be settled for a reduced project. We're not gonna look at a piecemeal project that's going forward like has been suggested. We, we deserve the full scope of this project. The entire two hundred and ninety-four million dollars, uh, of road projects that are coming to Kyle need to be there. A piecemeal project, we didn't piecemeal projects in the rest, on the east, the western part of coun, the county, and we didn't piecemeal projects on the western part of county park bonds. We need to make sure that we are getting the full impact of these projects. It's important, you know, to remember that every past road bond that we've had, uh, or park bond, we're the largest full-time municipality, Kyle is, sixty-five thousand residents. That means we shoulder the weight of these bonds. So when they're making improvements in other parts of the county, we're paying the majority of that bond. So it's important to remember that, you know, it's, it's, we were due. And that's one of the reasons I was bringing this forward is, uh, what do you call it? Resolution is because it's important. It's important for everybody to know what really happened. It's important to know that the ruling was about one word and that was it. It wasn't about not being transparent, it wasn't about the, the price of the bond, it wasn't about anything else except one word in a posted meeting. And that's what the ruling was. I, in my heart, feel like if this was in a different jurisdiction outside of Travis County, it, it, this bond would still be moving. Uh, but it's just the way it is. Um, and I, you know, we're not gonna go back there, but for me to hear that there's no further action going on this is really concerning because, um, this bond needs to move forward. It needs to be moved forward because the people voted on it and they passed it. And to silence their voices and their votes is really heartbreaking. So I, I want to make sure that we move forward with this bond and that's why I'm imploring our council members to get behind this resolution, to make sure that the county makes this investment that's long overdue in the eastern part of our county. The underserved people, they deserve it. It's important and we need to see it through. Before I read my resolution to councilmember Tobias?
Okay, thank you. Brian, do you mind queuing up the photos? Okay, as you know, I'm one of those councilmembers that's boots on the ground, fighting snakes and mosquitoes and taking pictures of our roads. But we continuously talk about the roads, right? Well, I want to be able to show people what they look like. Um, 'cause I could tell you this, and I hate to be judgmental, but I could tell you this, if that was over there in Plum Creek or over there in hometown Kyle, uh, it, it would, there'd be a, there'd be a firestorm right there. But I drive those roads every single day. And you could probably go on to some other ones, because that was BB Road, you go on to some more pictures if you don't mind, Brian. There's some of Bunton Creek, where there's one that's like a really bad drop-off. Um, and that was specifically, that was, uh, listed in the, um, road bond for Hays County. So, I, I kind of wanted to show some of those photos so that way people can have an idea of what the residents drive on. Um, it's dangerous. I was out there today, there's a lot of rock and broken concrete and broken asphalt and, um, it's very dangerous. But what's even more dangerous is there's people that actually walk on those roads, uh, which, which makes it, uh, a little bit more, um, um, more important. So to recap for us, the city of Kyle, back in twenty twenty-two, we proposed our road bond, which successfully passed. So seventy percent of the roads that are gonna be under construction as of next year are, uh, basically from the east side of Kyle. And so what, what I was really striving for is whenever the county decided to put the twenty-four road bond, a lot of those connectivity roads that we are looking at building, um, was looking forward to the county basically, uh, taking the baton and continuing on from there. And so, um, I was hoping by now that we would be able to start seeing some, um, designs phases, if they were going to get with, uh, companies that start looking at the concept as far as the, uh, the engineering of it. But it seemed like it was being delayed. And so when this news came about the other day about it, uh, being rejected, um, that was a big blow to our section of, of, of Kyle. And the residents, again, they voted for this. So, what I am advocating for is, again, these roads here have been neglected for so many years. Um, and I need people to really kind of see just a small, a small snippet of what these residents have to drive on. Um, and I need for them to understand. And also what I would like Judge Becetta and the rest of the commissioners to understand is you have to continue to move forward on this. We can't give up on the residents that voted for this, whether it's designing, uh, um, a new plan or bringing about some kind of projects. These roads have been in decay for decades and, and it is our responsibility as elected official and it's also to their responsibility as well to, to start looking at this and taking this very seriously. So, I hope that this resolution, it gets strong support from our dais. Uh, we need to be able to be unified, uh, as a city to, it make these improvements, uh, for our residents that includes also with the county. So, um, my hope is that we don't, the county does not give up on this. And I know that there's specific types of rulings and things like that that have to be done, uh, but I, I really feel that, um, the commissioners' court, uh, should have our support, including our judge, to make sure that we fulfill the obligation, and they fulfill the obligation of their voters, um, of making sure that we get these, um, the roads and the streets repaired and, and brought up to speed. Because we are, as a city, are just gonna be having a lot more development on that side of town and we need to be able to, uh, make sure that we partner up with them. So, I support this resolution, um, and, and I hope the city council, um, gives a lot of their, gives some input on, on how they feel about this, uh, so that way it benefits all of our residents.
I'm gonna read it now.
There's a lot of people in our community who, um, travel roads that are not managed by the city and they are county roads and the complaints that I've heard for three-plus years and while campaigning are immense. And I have to tell them that there's something really we can do about roads that are owned and operated by the county, or tech-staff for that matter. And here was an opportunity for, uh, the county to invest a lot of money into fixing some of those roads and to see all of it invalidated by a technicality that would not have changed the outcome of the vote or the outcome of the implementation of the bond is very, very disappointing and discouraging that there was a group of people who felt so disenfranchised by this outcome that they decided to take away this much-needed investment from, uh, a part of our town. I, I just, and to hear people speak against it, uh, it really makes me, uh, think about this world and what motivates people to do things sometimes. So I'm, uh, wholly in favor of this resolution. Councilmember Zuniga?
I agree with, uh, a lot of the comments that were said here today. Um, you know, this was devastating and disappointing because, uh, we need this network of roads, uh, for our city and our county. You know, we are, you know, whatever the technicality was, if the road, road wasn't in there, the way I look at it, there was a lot of open meetings, a lot of open houses about it, there was, um, correspondents, flyers, all the information was out there. We knew what we were voting on and it, and it, and it won overwhelmingly. Um, so, you know, those voters who voted in support of it, you know, just say, um, we just have to, we just have to do it again. You know, if, if it comes back on the ballot, we have to continue to move forward because these roads are decades behind. And with the growth that we have here, it's irresponsible of us as leaders to not have this infrastructure investment here that is gonna make the better quality of life, transportation and our workforce better. You know, one of the things that I hear from developments is, why would I build it there if the roads are bad? And I, and I, that was said to my face when I said, why can't you build this over there where the community needs it? And I was told by deep-pocket developers, why? You don't have the roads, you don't have the infrastructure. So this would have presented a solution that, you know, would given some relief to the areas that haven't been invested in. So, yeah, I was upset by it. And I was one of the first councilmembers who openly supported this road bond. I even took criticism up here from other councilmembers, playing politics. But this is not an issue that anyone should play politics with. Um, we know that it's necessary, we know that it's long overdue and the, there was voter support for it. So I would just encourage the county and the leaders that we have to, um, you know, find another way, another path and put this back on a new bond and get the full amount of these projects. Um, no shortcuts, no crumbs on the table. The full package is, is what we need here. So, I'll support this resolution.
Definitely, uh, thank y'all for all y'all's words and, yeah, unfortunately, a bond, a new bond would be too far down the road. I think right now what the county should be doing is focusing on the bond at hand, the voters passed it, they should be doing all steps necessary to reassure that this bond goes through and, uh, it's important. And just remember, it was one word that stopped this, so we definitely need to continue down the path we are and get started, these projects in real time. Not four years from now, not eight years from now, right now. Because this bond, uh, if we push this down, that four hundred and forty million dollar bond turns into about six hundred million dollars. And that's what's experienced, came forward, so for, to tackle, tackle those projects. So with that being said, I'd like to start off this resolution of the city of Kyle, city council of the city of Kyle, Texas, supporting Hays County improvements to roadways that improve safety, mobility and connectivity for the residents of city of Kyle. Whereas the city of Kyle voters approved the twenty twenty-two road bond program to make two hundred and ninety-four million in needed improvements, several, several ways, roadways within the city of Kyle for purposes of achieving improved safety, mobility and connectivity. Whereas Hays County voters approved the twenty twenty-four bond program to make four hundred and forty million investments in transportation improvements on several major corridors that are critical to Kyle's connectivity, safety and mobility, including Windy Hill Road, FM, RM one fifty east, BB Road, Button Lane, Go Fourth Road and Yarrington Road Extension, FM one ten, RM one fifty. Whereas the city of Kyle has vested interest in seeing the planned improvements in the Hays County twenty twenty-four bond program be implemented to support the investment Kyle voters have already made in its transportation systems through the twenty twenty-two road bond program. And whereas the city of Kyle has already initiated coordination with Hays County government on the agency's respective projects to determine shared mobility and safety objectives, Kyle and Hays County projects can support more effectively mobility about the city and region. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Kyle texts that, section one, the city council of the city of Kyle, through this resolution indicates its strong support for Hays County to continue the development and implementation of the projects identified in the twenty twenty-four road bond to improve mobility, safety and connectivity for its residents through any means necessary, as these projects are considered critical for improving Kyle's transportation system. Section two, the city council also pledges its integrity support of Hays County for the support, implementation and completion of these projects and direct city of Kyle staff to continue effective coordination with Hays County in this regard. Section two, open meetings, that is hereby officially found and determined that the meeting in which this resolution is passed is open to the public and the public notice of its time, place and purpose, said meeting was given by, required by law. Section three, effective date, this resolution will become effective immediately upon the passage of the Kyle city council, passed on this, hopefully passed here today.
All right, motions.
Second.
All right, motion, uh, to approve made by councilmember Tobias, seconded by council member, uh, Rizzo. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Just a final thing is to say, I can't stress how important these road projects are for the safety and the well-being of the people in the eastern part of the county. It's, I, I know it was talked about what I posted and I stand by it. It, it, it's lives that we're saving. When you see kids walking on these shoulders of these roads, it's tough and we see it every day. And you see families, just a couple of years ago, a friend of mine was hit on one of these roads and killed. So that's why I'm so passionate about this.
All right, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in. All opposed? All right, motion passes six zero. Uh, y'all, I'm gonna pass this down for us to sign and, and then we gotta return it to Jennifer. Next up on the agenda is the consent agenda. Item seven through 10, does anyone have any items they'd like to pull and discuss in more detail?
Number eight.
Number eight. Okay. Do you just have a question or do you want the whole presentation?
Yeah, just still questioning, um.
Okay.
How much, yeah.
We'll just do the presentation. Any other items?
That was the one I was gonna pull.
Okay.
Mayor Protim, I'd like to make a motion to approve, send it to item seven, nine and 10. Second.
All right, motion made to approve seven, nine and 10 by, uh, council member Rizzo, seconded by council member McKinney. Is that right? Okay. Uh, is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes six zero. All right, next up will be agenda item, uh, eight. Consider approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to purchase 0.0384 acres of right of way from Brooks Business Connection LLC for the purposes of improvements to Jack C Hayes Trail in an amount of $94,526 plus reasonable closing costs. Ms. Smits.
Good evening, Mayor Protim and Council, Amber Smits, Assistant City Manager for the record. Um, would you like me to go through the presentation or would, do you have specific questions?
Well, I know it's, yeah, it's just to see, I just had to question again about the, the dollar amount. I know we've been through this before, but, uh, that does to me seem a little high on that. What was, what was some of the issues that came across when we were talking about that? And why would it be at that large, at that dollar amount? Where it came to?
Yes, sir. I'm gonna turn it over to Kent Sick, the city's property acquisition attorney.
Hey, good evening, Mayor Protim, members of council, Kent Sick, I also had council assisting the city in real estate acquisition matters. Uh, it's true that there's only 1,679 square feet of land in this taking, but within that 1,679 square feet is about $38,000 worth of improvements. There's some, there's a concrete wall, there's paving, but the biggest thing, that is a small office building and their, their large concrete premises sign is on there. Uh, while we can't, or we really shouldn't get into the particulars of the negotiations and all the back and forth between the landowner and the city in public, I can tell the council that this property was appraised $17 a square foot. And there's, even the city's appraiser believed it was $37,000 worth of stuff in addition to the land that was there. Uh, the city makes very careful whenever landowners do make a counter offer, it's, it's based on legally admissible evidence, the city makes a careful analysis of both what its appraisal is, what the landowner's evidence is. In this case, I will share that the landowner had a, a different cost to replace the sign. It was not a great deal higher than the, uh, than the, uh, the one that the city's appraiser had come to. And the city, of course, considers its litigation cost and the time and expense. Uh, so overall this number was not, not outrageously higher than the appraisal that the city had to start with.
Okay, so a lot of it has to do with the reconstructing, reconstruction of the, um, infrastructure that's already there, it has to do with replacing a sign?
It's compensation to the landowner for the things that are on the land that we were taking away. So the money is given to the landowner to replace the sign as they wish.
Okay, all right.
And the sign and the other things that, that were taken.
Okay, there's trees there as well, correct? Trees and, and other?
Yes, although I have to say, generally speaking, trees are not compensable, so that, that wasn't a part of the analysis. Landscaping, yes, but trees, no.
Which is kinda hard, cause you know, when you buy a property, there's no tree on it. It's a, that's a 20, $20,000, you know, jump up right there. So actually this is probably a pretty good price on what we got if we didn't have to pay for trees. That's pretty good. So it's, uh, but yeah, I can understand when, you know, resident sees this, you're like, what the heck? I mean, it's this much land, but you know, it's the things that are on there, the infrastructure, everything else. I mean, the, it's, it's, you know, trust me, I, I definitely would have red flagged this if I would've thought it was just property. And you've heard my comment sometimes, so you definitely know, I would've red flagged it.
It's, uh, in the final analysis, uh, the analysis was made that it would cost far more, given the state of the evidence with litigation cost, it would cost far more to the city to litigate this than to resolve it at this number, a great deal more.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Kent.
All right, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item eight.
Second.
All right, motion made by, uh, myself and seconded by council member McKinney. Uh, is there any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, let me just ask two questions. Um, so Kent, is that the entrance into the business that we're looking at on the image? So will there be disruption to the business occurring? Like when the road is being built that is being considered in this amount? Cause I, I'm still leaning on it's, it's a large amount. I can't imagine a sign being that, that expensive, but like I said, I haven't seen it myself. But is the business gonna have a disruption during the roadway?
No.
Being built out?
It is not. I mean, there'll be the normal construction inconvenience that everyone up and down the roadway is going to suffer, but the construction contract will mandate that the contractor maintains access at all times. It's, uh, it wouldn't be appropriate to divulge the amount of the city's offer since it's a private matter between the city and the landowner. Uh, but I can tell you, it's in the neighborhood of about 20% less than this. So this is not, this is not a number that is just pie in the sky. This was something that the city's appraiser concluded to, and there was a minor amount of negotiations about it.
So there were, there were negotiations going back and forth? This, this, this was not the, the first offer highest number here, right?
I would say that the city made an offer and the landowner made a very well-supported and very fair counter offer, given both the evidence that they submitted and again, consideration of the city's litigation costs.
Okay, just wanted to ask that question.
All right, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion passes for two. All right, next up on the agenda, agenda is, uh, consider impossible action. Agenda item 11. Consider approval of a resolution finding public convenience and necessity and authorizing the use of eminent domain to condemn, if necessary, a 7.942 acre parcel of land in fee simple and a public utility easement over 1.055 acres of land in three parts as described in exhibits A and A1 to the resolution from certain retail property owned by Nancy Stedman, Janice Williamson, Rebecca Frankie, Don Frankie and Alton Frankie for the public use and purpose of construction of public roadway improvements and public drainage and utility infrastructure improvements for the BB Road West roadway improvement project. Ms. Smits.
Good evening, Mayor Protim and Council, Amber Smits, Assistant City Manager. I've got five PCNs for you tonight, so I'm going to explain how a PCN works on the first presentation and then the later four, we'll just, um, go through them very briefly. And so again, just a reminder, in 2022, um, the city of Kyle voters approved proposition A, it was a road bond for eight transportation projects across Kyle totaling 10.3 miles of new location reconstruction and widening projects to improve the city's transportation network. This particular project will improve BB Road from I-35 front edge to east of Green Pastures Road. And this picture shows you the alignment, um, the alignment and design features were approved by council in January of 2024. Task order to American Structure Point to complete preliminary design was approved in March of 2023. And the task order again to American Structure Point to complete final design was approved in March of 2024. Here's information about the site, uh, we need parcel two and parcel two E. Um, in order to acquire right of way and easements, uh, we have to do a survey and we have to perform an appraisal and those were completed. Uh, the property interests include, uh, 7.942 acres of fee simple right of way and then 1.055 acres of a public utility easement. Um, the improvements within the right of way and the easement include roadway reconstruction, sidewalk drainage and utility infrastructure. And so the summary is we are asking you to pass a resolution, uh, determining this project as a, a public convenience and necessity. Um, it has a, a public use and we need to effectuate the project for the public health and safety. Um, we are asking you to approve the resolution.
Any questions? No? All right, well, this item has a special motion, so I, I move that the city of Kyle authorize the use of power of eminent domain to acquire 7.942 acres of land in fee simple and a public utility easement over 1.055 acres of land total from property owned by Nancy Stedman, Janice Williamson, Rebecca Frankie, Don Frankie and Alton Frankie as described in agenda item 11 for the use of pu, pu, for the public use of constructing and operating public roadway improvements, drainage improvements and utility improvements for the Buntin Creek Road Improvement Project.
Second.
Uh, motion made by myself, seconded by council member Harris. Is there any discussion on the motion? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, motion passes six zero. Oh, shoot, I'm so sorry. All right, I got ahead of myself. Uh, this item recall, uh, calls for a roll call vote.
Ms. Zuniga?
Yes.
Rizzo?
Yes.
Heizer?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Tobias?
Yes, ma'am.
Mitchell is absent.
All right, motion passes, uh, six zero. Next up is agenda item 12. Consider approval of a resolution finding public convenience and necessity and authorizing the use of eminent domain to condemn, if necessary, 1.1513 acre parcel of land in two parts and a public utility easement over point 323, 3232 acre parcel of land in two parts as described in exhibits A, B, A1, A2 to the resolution from certain, certain real property owned by Robert E. and Catherine Lehman for the public use and purpose of constructing of public roadway improvements and public drainage and utility infrastructure improvements for the Buntin Creek Road Improvement Project. Ms. Smits.
For this project, we are traveling over to Buntin Creek Road. Um, is, uh, we are going to improve Buntin Creek Road from Lehman Road to Porter Cove here. Here you can see, uh, these are the project limits. We've got BGE as a design team on this project. Here's the site information, we need parcel 13 and 13E. Uh, we need, uh, 1.1513 acres in fee simple right of way and 0.3232 acres in a public utility easement. Improvements within the right of way and the easement include sidewalk, grading, drainage, utility infrastructure. And we ask that you pass the resolution to approve the PCN.
All right, uh, is there any questions? No? All right, uh, this item requires a special motion. I move that the city of Kyle authorize the use of the power, power of eminent domain to acquire 1.513 acres of land in fees, fee simple and a public utility easement over point 3232 acres of land from property owned by Robert E. and Catherine Lehman as described in agenda item 11 for the public use of constructing and operating public roadway improvements, drainage improvements and utility improvements for the Buntin Creek Road Improvement Project.
Second.
Motion made by myself, seconded by council member Harris. This item recall, calls for a roll call vote.
And just for clarification, that's item number 12.
Yes.
Um, Mitchell is absent, Harris?
Yes.
Tobias? Zuniga?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Heizer?
Yes.
Rizzo?
Yes.
All right, motion passes six zero. Uh, next up is agenda item 13. Yes, yeah. Consider approval of a resolution finding public convenience and necessity and authorizing the use of eminent domain to condemn, if necessary, a 4.18, 4, 4,187 square feet parcel land in fee simple and a public utility easement over a 17,228 square foot parcel of land as described in exhibits A and A1 to the resolution, resolution from certain real property owners by Casseta Ranch Residential Community, Inc. for the public use and purpose of construction of public roadway improvement and public drainage and utility infrastructure improvements for the Buntin Creek Road Improvement Project. Ms. Smits.
For this PCN, we are staying on Buntin Creek Road. The improvements, uh, go from Lehman Road to Porter Cove. Here's the alignment, we've got the BGE design team on this. Uh, site information, uh, we need parcel 18 and 18E. Uh, we need 4,187 square feet of fee simple right of way and then 17,228 square feet of public utility easement. Improvements within the right of way and easement include sidewalk, grading and utility infrastructure. And we ask that you approve the resolution.
All right, any questions? No? All right, this item has a special motion. Excuse me, I move that the city of Kyle authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire zero, no, I move, okay, to acquire, uh, point 0961 acres of land in fee simple and a public utility easement over point 3955 acres of land from property owned by Casseta Ranch Residential Community, Inc. as described in agenda item 13 for the public use of constructing and operating public roadway improvements, drainage improvements and the utility improvements for the Buntin Creek Road Improvement Project.
Okay.
Or a second?
Sorry, um, I think the land square footage was wrong in there on the reading.
Well, I read off square footage in the presentation and then I think the acreage is on the resolution, so.
Okay, that's what the result, okay.
Right, yes, sir.
Make sure we're on the right thing.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, agenda, uh, motion, uh, made by myself and seconded by council member Rizzo. Uh, this item requires a roll call vote.
Heizer?
Yes.
Tobias?
Yes, ma'am.
McKinney?
Yes.
Rizzo?
Yes.
Mitchell is absent, Harris?
Yes.
Zuniga?
Yes.
All right, motion passes six zero. Next up is agenda item 14. Consider approval of a resolution finding public convenience and necessity and authorizing the use of eminent domain to condemn, if necessary, a 4,440 square foot parcel of land in fee simple and a public utility easement over a 4,467 square foot parcel of land as described in exhibits A and A1 to the resolution from certain real property owned by Noel and Maria Dolores Campos for the public use and purpose of constructing of road, construction of roadway drainage and utility infrastructure improvements for the Kyle Parkway Lehman Road Extension Roadway Improvement Project. Ms. Smits.
Uh, for this project, our PCN, we are traveling to Center Street Off System. Uh, this project will improve Center Street from Old Stagecoach Road to Veterans Drive. And here's the alignment. We've got our friends Pape Dawson working on this project. Uh, we need parcel 13, 13E and 13TE. Um, the property interests include of 3,741 square feet of fee simple right of way, 253 square feet of public utility easement and 1,154 square feet of a temporary grading easement. Improvements within the right of way and easement include grading, drainage and utility infrastructure. And we ask that you pass the resolution.
Amber, I think that was 15.
Was that?
Cause 14 was Kyle Lehman.
Okay. Grant, can you pull up 15? 14?
If you make me read that again, I'm done.
Unfortunately, you do.
Do I, I, do I have to reintroduce the item? No? Okay. I will if I have to. Okay, I don't want four people to invalidate any votes here.
As long as we stay on this one, the one that was read will be fine.
Okay.
Isn't that number 15 he read?
The presentation was 15, he read 14.
Okay, okay.
There we go. Okay, now we're traveling back to Lehman Road, Kyle Parkway. Okay, this project will provide an extension for Lehman Road and Kyle Parkway that connects to Buntin Creek Road. And here are the project limits, our friends at Cobb Finley are the design team for this project. Uh, we need parcel 24 and parcel 24E here. In fee simple right of way, we need 4,440 square feet and public utility easement, we need 4,467 square feet. Improvements within the right of way and easement include roadway drainage and utility infrastructure. And we ask that you pass the resolution.
Are there any questions about agenda item 14? No? Okay. I move that the city of Kyle authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire 0.1019 acres of land in fee simple and a public utility easement over point 1025 acres of land from property owned by Noel and Maria Dolores Campos as described in agenda item 14 for the public use of constructing and operating public roadway improvements, drainage improvements and utility improvements for the Kyle Parkway Lehman Road Extension Roadway. improvements, and utility improvements for the Kyle Parkway Lehman Road Extension Roadway Improvement Project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's like everyone forgets the second on these, on these. Motion made by myself, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo. This item requires a roll call vote.
Tobias?
Yes, ma'am.
McKinney?
Yes.
Rizzo?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Zuniga?
Yes.
Mitchell is absent. Heiser?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. And finally, Agenda Item 15. Consider approval of a resolution finding public convenience and necessity in authorizing the use of eminent domain to condemn if necessary a 3,741 square foot parcel of land in fee simple, a 253 square foot public utility easement, and a 1,154 square foot temporary grading easement. All is described in Exhibits, Exhibits A, A1, and A2 to the resolution from certain real property owned by Hometown Kyle Homeowners Association, Inc. for the public use and purpose of construction of public roadway improvements, public drainage, and utility infrastructure improvements, and grading restoration for the Center Street Off System Road Improvement Project. Ms. Schmaitz.
Now we're on Center Street. Maybe. Grant?
Okay, this project will improve Center Street from Old Stagecoach Road to Veterans Drive. Here are the project limits, Pape Dawson is the design team on this project. Need parcel 13, 13E, and 13TE. Property interests include 3,741 square feet of fee simple right of way, 253 square feet of public utility easement, and 1,154 square feet of temporary grading easement. Improvements within the right of way and easement include grading, drainage, and utility infrastructure. And we ask that you approve the resolution.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, just to be clear, oh, this is the hotel, no, sorry.
Good. Anyone else? All right, this item requires a special motion. I move that the City of Kyle authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire 3,741 square feet of land in fee simple, a 253 square foot public utility easement, and a 1,154 square foot temporary grading easement from property owned by Hometown Kyle Homeowners Association, Inc. as described in Agenda Item 15 for the public use of constructing and operating public roadway improvements, drainage improvements, and utility improvements for the Center Street Off System Roadway Improvement Project.
Second.
All right, motion made by myself, seconded by Councilmember McKinney. This item requires a roll call vote.
Let me have a quick discussion.
Oh, yes.
I'd just like to thank staff real quick for reaching out to Hometown Kyle and hearing their concerns. It was really important to them. Just want to continue to, for y'all to work with them, so appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, this item recalls, calls for a roll call vote.
Harris?
Yes.
Zuniga?
Yes.
Mitchell is absent. Tobias? Heiser?
Yes.
Rizzo?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
All right, motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmaitz. Next up is Agenda Item 16. Consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between Guadalupe Blanco River Authority and the City of Kyle for participation in the Water Secure Initiative. Mr. Murphy.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, City Council Mike Murphy, Director of Water Utilities. Fresh off of our Water Master Plan and our presentation on the Water Utilities budget, we continue to strive to produce more options for additional water for the City of Kyle. And so what we're doing tonight is we're going to be talking about the Water Secure Initiative. And just a little background on, on the, on that particular initiative, in fall of 23, the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority, or GBR, approached the City of Kyle regarding this project and the interest in participating. Initial participation in the project was approximately 5 million gallons per day. The amount was reduced by GBR due to reduced allocation that was based on GBR customer participation. The value provided to GBR was prior to the Water Master Plan and completion. Current Water Master Plan anticipates Water Secure to be available in approximately year 2034 at a capacity of 4.1 million gallons per day of firm, firm capacity. In the Water Master Plan, it was identified that deficiencies were going, we were going to result, are, were going to result in year 2035, and this includes the 4.1 million gallons a day from the Water Secure project. The City of Kyle has updated the request to GBR to 10 million gallons a day, and that's what we're going to be proposing today. And this, this chart was from our Water Master Plan, I'm sure you've seen it. So we've invited a very special guest tonight from GBR, a good friend, the Deputy Chief Engineer at GBR, Brian Perkins, and he's going to walk us through the proposal of the memorandum of understanding that we're going to be recommending at the end of this presentation. So impactful strategies to resolve the known deficiency in our water supply included several things, and you can see the last one on this bullet point list was Water Secure. So we look forward to hearing this presentation. So with that said, I'm going to invite Brian Perkins up, and we'll continue with the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Hello, Mayor Protem, but Councilmembers, my name is Brian Perkins with GBR. I'm also a City of Kyle resident, just a proud member of the community. So this project kind of started back in summer 2023 when the Water Board released draft projections for population within, across the entire state, including our region. GBR is a 10-county district. We took a look at the five upper counties of our district, including Hayes County is one of those five, mainly for growth along the I-35 corridor, the SH-130 corridor, and the I-10 corridors. And we were kind of staggered at what some of the numbers we saw. What this graphic really shows in, in just simple terms is all the dashlines are the Region L planning numbers for population for those five counties, with the first five of those being the rather lower ones, and the large one that sweeps up highly being the 2026 plan. That plan is in draft form right now and available for comments if the city would like to make comments on that. The black line there shows actual population amongst those five counties from 1990 through 2023, and you can see actual population outpaced the, the projection, the previous projections. We took a look at this new projection from the Water Board for these five counties, and like I said, we were rather staggered by those. So we approached in the fall of 2023, had some informal conversations with a lot of the utilities in the area, including the City of Kyle, and really wanted to ground truth that and say, are these real numbers? Are you expecting this kind of growth? What's your water supply plan? And the question came up, is, is there a regional plan that GBR could put together to address some of the needs? And all we talked about, talked to about 25 different utilities, utilities ranging from Buta and Kyle all the way out to Burnie, as far south as Victoria. So this is the timeline again, so we started those informal conversations in fall of 2023. There was enough interest amongst those 25 utilities to allow our water, our board, sorry, to allocate some reserve funds to start a study. So we started the Water Secure feasibility study in December of that timeframe, using a firm called Black and Beach. Throughout that process, over the last 18-plus months, we've had multiple touchpoints with each of the utilities. We've, you know, we've kicked it off with some formal conversations and just asking some very basic questions. Or if you're interested in water that GBR could provide from Water Secure, how much would you be interested in? Would you prefer treated or raw water? Where would you want it developed, delivered, and when would you need it? And we took all that information from Kyle and all the other utilities, compiled that together, and ran some preliminary analysis. We then presented some preliminary numbers and preliminary, preliminary concepts, concepts to staff in the summer of last year, 2024. And again, we kind of asked them to take some time, digest that information, and come back with us, come back to us with the, basically the same kind of questions. Are you still interested in the project? You know, knowing that the cost and the time scale that it's going to take to develop this project? If so, how much water are you interested in? Where would you want it delivered, et cetera? We took all that information, compiled it into one concept, and presented that to staff and all the utilities back in May of, April, May of this year. And at this point, the project's kind of set, and I'll talk about the elements of that in a moment. And right now, where we're at is we're trying to, we've drafted up MOUs, memorandum of understanding for each of the communities to kind of elevate this to their governing bodies, whether it's the City Council or Board, and have more formal discussions about, yes, we're still interested in this project, we're interested in this amount of water, given where we are today in 2025. It is a non-binding MOU, but it sets the stage for a water supply agreement that would be binding. And it really kicks off that process of getting those water supply agreements to you and to your city attorney to review and to understand what commitment that would be. And it would take a formal action from this council later, at a later date, to, to formalize that water supply agreement. So that's kind of where we are today. So a map here on the screen kind of shows what the project looks like. It is a large-scale regional project, it basically affects the entire basin. GBR has, from the state of Texas, TCQ, surface water rights that are underutilized that we plan to use together to develop this project. They're water rights that some we've owned since the 1960s, that date, actually date back to the 1940s and 50s, so they're very senior. It also incorporates a junior water right that we recently got in 2020. In total, that allows us to develop this project. These, this is two projects essentially that were in previous regional water plans that we now put together to meet this high-growth need in a relatively quick timeframe. There are two storage components involved, off-channel reservoir, and you can kind of think of the Lane City Reservoir that LCA did, it's now called Arbuckle Reservoir, it's basically a large kind of bathtub of ground, essentially, and aquifer storage recovery, which I think you're familiar with as well. In total, there's enough storage there that basically equals Canyon Lake. So it's diversified storage, one's above ground, one's below ground, but composite, it's about the same amount of storage as Canyon Lake. And coincidentally, this project yields about the same amount of water on a firm basis as Canyon Lake does. So project elements include some lower basin infrastructure, that off-channel reservoir I mentioned, and the raw water transmission to move some water from the lower basin and up to the, to the middle and upper basins, a centralized facility that includes a water treatment plant, and that aquifer storage recovery system, and then treated water transmission throughout. In total, it's about 250 miles of pipeline. In terms of the project development, the plan would be to kick off the project in 2026 with the, with a design and move forward into construction, have all the infrastructure built by about 2033, 2034. Once the off-channel reservoir is filled, then about two-thirds of the water would be available under the contract, and then once the aquifer storage recovery is filled, it takes a little longer to fill that up, another third of water. So what that means for the City of Kyle, if you're asking for 10 MGD, which is roughly about 11,200 acre feet, seven, roughly 7,500 acre feet would be available by about 2033, 2034 timeline. The other 3,700 acre feet would be available once that ASR is filled, roughly 2040. So this also allows you to grow into that project as well.
And this is above-ground storage?
So the off-channel reservoir is above-ground storage. It's, it's off-channel, meaning it's not on a stream, a perennial or intermittent stream. It is truly almost like a berm that is a rectangle.
Correct, I'm pretty familiar with reservoirs.
And then the rest.
Just making sure it was above-ground reservoir or underground, so this is going to be above-ground reservoir, correct?
There's that, and then there's aquifer storage recovery, which is actually the treatment and injection through wells into the ground, and then recovery of that water later. So aquifer storage recovery is what that is. So it's actually has both components.
Okay.
And they kind of complement each other. The off-channel reservoir is there, and it can be filled relatively quickly, it can be replenished quickly after a drought, and it, it meets kind of the short-term droughts that we have. The aquifer storage recovery, while it takes a long while to fill, it also takes a long time to deplete, and so it, it acts as a buffer over a longer period.
And that's where my question is going to, is the aquifer, because I mean, I guess what worries me is the over-pumping on private wells, right?
Mm-hmm.
If we're filling the aquifer, what keep, what is the safeguards we have in place that's going to make sure that water's there when you have over-pumping in private wells? Because that's something the state can't regulate, is the over-pumping in, in wells. So that's, I guess that's the only concern I've kind of, we're putting all this water down in the aquifer.
Yeah.
How do we know somebody's not, some, someone with bad intentions pulling it out?
Great question. So I'm going to answer two things here. First, so the state law such that we can't take more out than we've put in, so we're, it's basically a one-to-one or even just a little bit less than one basis. The plan with this project, and I talked about a facility, likely in Gonzales County, I'm not pushing buttons, sorry, um, is that we would have enough land there for the, for the, a balancing reservoir, the water treatment plant, and the 24 to 30 wells, but also enough land controlled to have that buffer so that no one can come in and put a well right next to ours and pull it out. And so that storage buffer zone would be completely controlled by the project. It could be anywhere from 3,000 to 5,000 acres. We have to do some additional studies on that, especially once we go through piloting, but the idea is that, that, that is controlled by GBR so that no one else can come and take the water we've just injected.
Yeah, that makes me feel a lot better.
Yeah.
That's the plan, I, I appreciate you sharing that with me.
It takes a lot of land, but it's, it's a risk that we have to mitigate through that, so.
Yeah, because I, you know, you, you see it, I mean, with fracking, everything else going on around the state, I mean, fracking right now is taking a lot of water, it takes 10, 10 barrels of water to produce one barrel of oil. So to make sure that, you know, we're not losing that precious resource, which is water, you know, for other parts of the state is really important, so having that buffer is really key.
In terms of total infrastructure costs, it's around $6 billion. It yields about 90 million gallons a day, and City of Kyle is asking for about 10 of that. So you'd be one participant of many. As I mentioned, we've talked to about 25 different utilities. I do not anticipate all 25 will participate. I do anticipate it'll be probably somewhere between 15 and 20. To date, we've already had commitments through the MOU process of, of over, let's see, of, nine of those commitments, those, so far. So we're, we're getting there, and we've asked that those, those commitments, those MOUs are signed by the end of July, so. We will likely use SWIFT funding for the public participants, public utility participants of the project, which City of Kyle is one of. There will be some investor-owned utilities that will be part of this project. They will either have to cash fund or find financing on their own outside the SWIFT process. And so it'll come, it'd be a blended process of the funding. The slide here just kind of generates some of the, what that, some of the infrastructure cost is. We plan to take advantage of some of the legislation that GBR helped craft to extend that period for 40 years rather than 30 years through the SWIFT program. The advantage there is it allows you to amortize some of that early debt and not have to raise your rates right away, and you can slowly run to the rates, especially since this is going to be a eight-to-10-year project to develop, you don't want necessarily settle your current residents with paying for that right away. And so. Next steps, this is essentially where we are today, we're executing these MOUs. We plan to get a program manager onboard in advance of funding and in advance of those water supply agreements, because we need to kick this project off if we're going to deliver on time. We know that timing of water supply is critical to all the utilities in the area, especially in this high-growth area. We plan to execute the agreements by the first quarter of next year and kickoff design in the second quarter of next year. So with that, we can start construction by 2028 and start having deliveries of water in the early 2030 decade. So I think that's my last slide. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
So where is the water coming from? Is this from the Carrizo by the Arwa project?
No, this is not really the Carrizo, Arwa at all, this is our surface water rights out of the Guadalupe River.
Out of the Guadalupe River.
Yeah, these are not granted through a groundwater district, they're granted through the State of Texas, TCQ.
Okay, you are taking water out of Arwa, and that's going to Lake Canyon?
No.
No.
We are partners with Arwa in a project where we developed our own well field and they developed their own well field. That all gets treated at a common water treatment plant and delivered through a common delivery system. Our water goes, currently goes to the cities of Lockhart and New Braunfels, as well as Goforth Special Utility District. We do have a planned expansion of that project that will get water to, more water to Goforth, County Line SUD, Maxwell SUD, and Communitarial Utilities. So it's, it's basically, it's, it's all along that I-35, 130 kind of corridor.
I've heard a plan to pipe water from the Carrizo to GBR sites, that's not, that's to GBR SEP, GBR A surface site, so that's not happening?
No, the Carrizo, that Carrizo project has developed, it only goes to those customers I mentioned, so, and it's, that's a completely different system than this.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's groundwater, and we're doing, this will be surface water, so.
Sir?[1790.61]
I just want to make sure that I'm tracking the math correctly. So is this 10 MGD, is that in addition to the 4.1 that we've already got, or is it taking us from 4.1 to 10?
It's taken the 4.1 to 10. So, 4.1 is not set in stone. I think that's what you planned in your master plan, but, I mean, this is kind of, at this point, since we've completed the feasibility study, this is kind of a level set, reset. So I'm asking, and we are asking, utilities, tell us what you want to see in a water supply agreement at this point. We've talked about 5 MGD and 4.1 MGD at different times or whatever, but is that what you still want, or do you want something different? And city staff has recommended 10 MGD at this point.
Thank you, Brian. And so, next steps. Let me slide up. So we're looking at execution of a memorandum of understanding between GBRAs and the city of Kyle to continue our collaborative efforts. The MOU does not obligate the city to Kyle to a certain capacity. The capacity identified provides GBRAs capacity for the project and planning purposes. MOU is non-binding. The draft agreement will be developed prior to September 1st of 2025 for participating parties. The agreement identifies rights, duties, and obligations. So staff's recommendation, we've got two options. We've got an option to approve the MOU or not approve the MOU. And staff is recommending option one, approving the MOU.
Councilmember Rizzo.
Mayor Protim, I'd love to make a recommendation to approve option one, item number 16.
Second.
Question.
Hold on. Motion made by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by myself. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilmember Harris.
One question. I know we need to get as much order as we possibly can, and GBRAs has been a good partner. Can you tell me approximately, we're probably not going to know until they know how many partners they have, but is the cost comparable to our Arwa contracts?
No, this water, because this is not going to be available, or we're not going to pay it until the water is available, so it'll be more expensive than that water. But I think, Brian.
Yeah, you know, when talking to the various utilities and staff, we looked at the comparison of various projects GBRAs has been involved in since dating back to the early 2000s. And obviously, water is getting more expensive as we go in time. And this project, as Mr. Murphy mentioned, is not going to be developed over until the 2030 decade, it's going to be more expensive. But also, it's kind of a function of pipeline length. The days of just drilling a well and whatnot and adding a mile of pipeline are kind of passed. The Arwa project has roughly around 80 miles worth of pipeline. And so when you factor up the fact that we're looking at 25, I'm sorry, 250 miles worth of pipeline, it's in line with that, but it's certainly more expensive than the Arwa water, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question too, for Brian. So this looks like we're trying to find, I guess, a secure backup, but wouldn't it be more cost-effective just to get more out of the Arwa Carrizo spring when we need it, if we need 10 million gallons, whatever it is, when our population gets there, rather than try to redo a new process? I get that this is surface water, so probably is going to have less of the additives and minerals, but if we already have a pipeline in the Carrizo, and I think we've heard presentations that there's plenty of water there, isn't it more cost-effective just to increase the needed amount there than to start a secondary system?
So I think it's, there's a lot to that question, and a lot in our water planning. So when we went through the water master planning process with STV, we had a 50-year time horizon, and we looked at all of our water supplies that we currently have, the ones that are available, and future phases of those water supplies that are available, and looked at our projected demand for how water is going, we're going to need more and more water as the city continues to grow. There's simply not enough of those other supplies to be able to meet that projected demand over that 50-year and, you know, beyond time horizon. Water Secure Project was one of those particular ones, and I think there was a chart in this presentation the gentleman just showed us, that showed how we needed that additional supply out in the future. So it's always been part of the water master plan to look at additional supply. We knew this was one that was underway. It is an expensive source of water, there's no two ways about that, but there's, all of the easy water supply projects have really probably already come to market. These are going to be ones that are more difficult as the area continues to grow, you have to look for additional solutions. But we do believe we need to have a layered solution of water supply agreements going forward. One of those that we have is indirect potable and direct potable options, which have pros and cons of those. We'll be bringing those to you as well. We have additional supply contracts, and we will be looking at additional phases of Arwa as well in increasing that supply. But there are other customers that they have in that system too. So it's one that we believe that we need in our water portfolio, or we wouldn't be bringing it to you.
I can see the other side of it in that it helps with competition. So we have two sources here, and, you know, we're not tied to just, you know, one when we need it and at the rates that they charge. And so we'd have maybe, in the long run, a more steady market of the cost.
Well, I guess the other thing to think about too is, we talked about this in the water master plan, and what's firm supply, and what is supply that could be affected with different droughts. Not all of our water is firm supply, meaning that we are guaranteed to be able to get it under any conditions. So we have risk in our water supply model as we have drought issues that are out there. Again, you just want to have more different, a lot of different sources and a lot of different ways to get water to meet the projected demand. Mike, I don't know if you had any additional comments?
That was well said. And the water, the water market continues to be more competitive, and the water sources are being more hard to find. And our best advice, our best recommendation for council is when projects like this come along, they're like once-in-a-lifetime type projects, we take advantage of them. Otherwise, we're going to regret it at some point in the future that we didn't do this. But we don't, like Brian is saying, we talk about this all the time, and the scarcity of water in this particular area, especially when you're in such a severe drought, we've got to take advantage of these opportunities. Because other counties that have these well fields are being more and more, you know, protective of their water supply, and selling them across county lines is probably going to be a thing in the past and not too distant future.
I know the state was thinking about, you know, even passing laws to allow us to buy, you know, across state lines as well, because some is not allowed right now, but just to answer yours, it's surface water, it's harder to treat than groundwater, so it's more contaminants in the surface water. But, you know, that's why I was glad about the groundwater, but I was worried about the risks there, but thanks for answering those questions. Yeah, I totally agree. I think it's great that we're looking at, you know, multiple options and making sure that we have, what do you call it, water sources, so that when we do have droughts in different parts of states, it doesn't affect us as hard as the city. So looking forward to this. With that, do you need some action from us, Brian, on this?
Yes, sir, we're asking-
You already made a motion.
We're asking the council to consider approving the MOU.
I forgot about that.
All right. One more question from Councilmember Harris.
So this contract will be a fixed amount. We'll have 10 MGD.
Well, at some point, we'll lock in the value. I think what Brian said, if we're still in the feasibility, design phase-
But we will be obligated to draw that.
At some point, we would.
And that's the same with Arwa. We're obligated to draw a certain amount. We have GBRAs, is that dependent upon what we need? Do we have any contracts that are not fixed amounts?
You're asking, are they take-or-pay contracts?
Yeah, exactly.
So the San Marcos is a take-or-pay contract, and I'd have to go back and look at the other ones to see.
Yeah. So you wanted to say about the GBRAs water?
So the way we structure our contracts, there's kind of three components. There's the water fee itself, and then there's the debt service. The debt service is the take-or-pay, and yes, you are locked into a certain amount of water, because the way we go about securing funding for these types of projects is based on what's called contract revenue pledges. So those water supply agreements in totality, you and others, will be the, what we can go get bonded to get the funding for. And so we have to right-size the project based on the amount of water that folks want and that they're going to pay for and take. So, and so, once we, while we're at the MOU stage, it's non-binding, the 10 MGD can be changed, I'd be on this. When we get to the water supply agreement and we, you know, hopefully come back to you and, you know, get your blessing to, you know, have staff sign that, then we would, that would be the lock-in for whatever amount that might be, so.
And I would just say, at that time too, the exact amount of water will be determined. We're asking for the 10 MGD. We'll see what their availability is with all of the other utilities that participate or not participate, and they'll come back and refine that figure for us. We're trying to reserve strategically as much as we can for our future growth, but there may only be eight or nine or some other figure. We'll look and see what that is. But that will be part of the water supply agreement.
All right. As a reminder, motion made by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by Councilmember Harris, I think. Yeah, that sounds accurate.
And just one more question real quick. So who would be pursuing government, state funding with the new bills that are passed on water? Would that be GBRAs? Would that be the city?
Good question, Ron.
It would be GBRAs. GBRAs would be pursuing SWIFT funding or any, we're open to other funding sources. We'll see what's most applicable for our customers. So if there's some of the new money available that might lend to, you know, state participation or a lower rate, we'll certainly go after that as well.
Sounds good. Just making sure, and you will pass on the savings to the city, Kyle?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
We essentially operate like a nonprofit business, so yes.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Next up is Agenda Item 17. Consider approval of an ordinance to rezone approximately 5.01 acres of land from agriculture to warehouse for property located at 340 CR 158 in Hayes County, Texas, Z 25-0135. Ms. Sharp?
Good evening, Mayor Protim and council. This one, just before I get started, does have a public hearing, but if it works for y'all, I'll go ahead and go through the presentation.
Yeah, we can open the public hearing after the presentation.
All right. So tonight, we have a rezoning for you to consider. It's just about five acres. Request is to rezone from agriculture to warehouse. This property is located off of County Road 158. This is a city-initiated rezoning to complete a 2007 zoning application that was never formally processed. The property was partially developed in 2008 in accordance with the warehouse zoning. Little bit of history on the property, since this is kind of a unique case. The property was platted in 2002 when it was in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. The property owner applied and paid for zoning, annexation, and site development permits in 2007. The site plan was then approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission in March of 2007, and annexation was completed in February of 2008, and development of the first phase of the property happened shortly after. Based on city records and records provided by the property owner, there's evidence that the zoning application was submitted and paid for, but was never formally processed. Therefore, zoning was never assigned, and it's remained agriculture since the property was annexed. That's what we automatically assign for zoning when anything's annexed into the city. So as you can see here, it's surrounded kind of to Plan, you know, West, some existing warehouse zoning, and then Plan Southeast, right, whatever you want to call it, is agriculture zoning, and then across County Road 158 is some single-family residential. So primarily surrounded by warehouse zoning and other warehouse uses. Like I said, part of the property was already developed in accordance with that warehouse zoning. So going into the next slide, you can see this is also in the regional commercial per our future land use plan, which does allow for some warehouse uses as well. So the current use of the property is a commercial roofing and sheet metal contracting company. This use is planned to continue, and the company wants to be able to expand and build out the remainder of their site. Important to note that any uses allowed in the warehouse zoning district would also be permitted on the property if it were to be rezoned to warehouse. So based on the existing use and the city's failure to formally rezon the property in 2007, 2008, and in addition to the surrounding properties in the future land use plan, staff is supportive of this request, and I apologize, that last slide, or that last bullet point did not make it off of the slides. But your options tonight are approve the request as presented, you can also approve an equal or more restrictive zoning district, or you can deny the request. And then the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 5-0 to recommend approval. So if you want to, go ahead and open the public hearing, and then we can answer any questions.
All right. This item is posted for public hearing. The public hearing will now open, is now open. Anyone wishing to speak may come up to the podium and state your name for the record. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do we have any questions for Ms. Sharp?
I do.
Our councilmember Zuniga.
Let me go first, Mr. Michael.
I called on you.
Yeah, so when I look at the area here, of course, I have to look at the neighborhood around it, what's surrounding it. Although this was probably approved in 2002, we have to look at whether it's the best land use for the specific area, best fit, and I just don't think, I don't agree that warehouse is appropriate around these neighborhoods. I see Bunton Creek all over again in this situation, where you have Bunton Road, a bunch of neighborhoods stacked in there, and you have a bunch of warehouses. And it just not, it just does not fit, does not appear appropriate. I'd like to see more of a community commercial, retail services, something that adds value into that location, and break up the monopoly of warehouses. Because we're going to end up growing County Road 158 at some point, so just having more warehouses in that dense area doesn't make sense to me, especially, specifically across where you have many vehicles on 158 and many surrounding small neighborhoods. So it's just not to me a good fit, that's compatible.
Really quick, before we go on, like legally speaking, because this was already signed, sealed, and paid for 18 years ago, are there any legal ramifications if we don't approve
I would imagine there could be, and if we wanted to talk about it, it's something we'd want to do in executive session.
Call executive. So, so, go ahead, finish.
All right.
I do have a question.
All right, go ahead, Councilmember Rizzo.
My question is, so just to be clear, there's already a warehouse here. What he's asking is for an expansion of the warehouse. You're not getting something new, they're just making the warehouse a little bigger because they need room for their material. So it's kind of what you're getting. There's already a warehouse there.
All right. All right, I'm going to get us back into executive session here.
The under 551.071.
Yeah. The city council will now go into executive session to discuss Agenda Item 17, pursuant to the Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.087.
It's just 071.
551.071, and only 071.
We're going into exec, request of Zuniga?
I guess.
I'm going to call this meeting back to- I'm going to call this meeting back to order, or the time is 10:05. I'm going to call this meeting back to order. No action was taken, executive session. All right, executive session is now adjourned. Do I have to read us back into the other meeting? No?
Public hearing.
No? Okay. We already did the public hearing. Okay, so, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item 17.
Second.
All right, motion to approve made by myself, seconded by Councilmember Tobias. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion passes 5-1. And that will be all. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
18.
Number 18.
Yeah, 18.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay. In my head, it was postponed. Okay, so, item 18 will be postponed to a later, a later meeting.
You wanted to. I know that that was an important item for the mayor, and he couldn't be here this evening, so it's the council's pleasure if you want to hear it or if you want to postpone it.
Say postpone.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to postpone. Do I have to do that? Agenda item 18.
Second.
All right.
Got the thumbs up over there, so.
So, do I, do I do that? Sorry, Leslie.
No, she's known.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, motion passes 6-0. I don't-
Motion.
You want to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, meeting adjourned.